Test, test, one, two, three. Test, test, one, two, three. February 15, 2023. Sioux City, City Council Budget Session. Test, test, one, two, three. Test, test, one, two, three. February 15, 2023. Sioux City, City Council Budget Session.
Test, test, one, two, three. Test, test, one, two, three. February 15, 2023. Test, test, one, two, three. Sioux City, City Council Budget Session. Test, test, one, two, three. Test, test, one, two, three. February 13, 2023. Test, test, three.
Test, test, one, two, three. Test, test, one, two, three.
More?
Here.
O'Kane?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Good morning. We'll start with the CIP discussions and reports for the FY24 budget wrap-up. The first item is Project 889012 Annual Field Services Facilities Maintenance and Consolidation. CIP Page 66, Report Page 6.
I understand we have a written document, signed document, on the land acquisition. I thought maybe that would have been included in here.
Yeah, Mike Colet, Assistant City Manager. Yes, we do. I'll let Marty speak to that. He's had direct communication with the landowner.
It's signed?
We have a signed LOU, yes.
Can we get copies?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
I just haven't seen any copies, and that's what I'm waiting for, I think.
In three years, right? Three years is how long the price will hold?
On the second part.
On the second part.
That's correct.
Okay.
Right. Same price.
Great.
Additional items or questions on that one?
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Seth?
Item number three on the agenda, excuse me, Project 749084 Annual Airport Capital Projects. CIP Page Number 72, Report Number 7, or Page Number 7.
Thanks for that report, Mike. You've got pretty thorough.
The highest engineering, does that include inspections of 20%?
It does.
Maybe other engineers in the city should look at those numbers.
And that's at the high side, normally, that 20%. Usually, we're in that 15 to 18. And again, just to recap what's on here, it goes through two other outside engineers to look at as well. FAA engineer and independent engineer other than who we contract with.
Right. Do you have more sets of eyes on it?
Yeah. And because it's their mon-- it's 90 or 95% their money, so they want to make sure it's spent wise, too.
Item number four.
I want to go back. I want to ask one question, because these teehangers are going to come up. I want to know what you're going to do with those teahangers, because sometimes around here, it must be my old age, because you tell me that I should have known that, and I don't. I've seen nothing that-- I just don't think that we should continue to give these to fixed base operations without some more recoup of our costs.
Like compensation for that, or something, yeah?
We'll negotiate what those rates are when we build them with the FBO, either one or both of them. It's kind of undecided on how best is to allocate that out to the FBOs, since there's two of them now as well.
The best way is to let both bid on it, and the high bidder wins.
We'll definitely have that discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
And how soon are they going to start it, get out of the ground?
They're projected to be done this fall.
You haven't bid on them yet, have you?
We have not. They're under design right now, to be bid.
Made of steel, so good luck.
Yeah. They're about four months lead time.
Okay.
Item number four, Project 611001 City Share New Residential Development, Page 84. CIP Page 84, Report Page 8.
If I read your memo correctly, the dig funds are spoken for for FY24?
That's correct.
So we'll be looking at FY25. What impact do you think that'll have, Marty? Developments that are--
I think it's okay, because we're working on a number of projects, as you know, but the lead times are long enough that you can budget them for the future. So I wish we, I wish we had more in the next year, but we'll, you know, we've got a lot of projects and a lot of different sources of funds for those. But this is really important to paying for infrastructure, and I think that the additional funds in the later years, we can use to plan for additional projects.
Okay, thank you.
Item number five, Project 663164 Business Park Tech Studies, CIP Page 92, Report Page 9.
Have there been any recent legislative proposals that we were waiting on?
We haven't seen one yet, but Debbie Durham was talking about one, and there's one for the mega site program. And then there's a, we're expecting another one as part of their normal funding, their normal program. So we're going to keep an eye on that. We've attended several webinars, and we're keeping an eye on the legislation that, and if there, that's pending. And if there is anything that passes, we'll certainly apply for it. We'll apply. The question specifically here was about whether there were funds available now to help with business park studies, and there are not. But it's been talked about a lot, and we may see that this year in the legislation.
Thanks for monitoring that.
Marty, one last thing with this, just thinking about this and kind of watching and monitoring the legislation, but also what opportunities there are that we're not taking advantage of or not yet realized. I want to, I would just ask you, whether it's you yourself, or whether it's even Bob Hadmore, just thinking about being in better communication with Debbie down in the state office. I know you communicate with her fairly regularly, but Julie and I, and I know Renee was there as well, just at the last visit that she had with Iowa's West Coast. She emphasized a few different times that, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, and that she's worked with a lot of different cities on different programs. And even if there isn't a program, but they come with a proposal or an idea of how they're willing to be creative and think about funding. And I mean, she, Renee can fill you in, too, but I mean, she pretty much point-blank said that Sioux City is not taking full advantage of all the resources that they have available, and that she wants us to be competitive and wants us to be proactive in reaching out. But then sometimes she needs to wait for that correspondence from our side. So I think, I think, I think we just should be as proactive as possible. She gave a couple ideas that I'll talk with staff offline about what we can do and maybe pursue. But I would just ask, I think, along the same line, anything that we can do to continue to reach out, I would appreciate your efforts very much.
Yeah, I would, I would say we have often asked and sometimes been successful and sometimes not.
Yeah.
I wasn't able to be at that one particular meeting, but we'll certainly follow up on those.
Yeah.
Either Jill or Renee has a comment on those or not. But in one case, and there was also some discussion on the Washington, on the Des Moines trip that, with the legislators, we had a meeting with the chamber with Debbie, and she brought up a couple of things at that meeting. Maybe they were the same things, I'm not sure. But one had to do with some IFA funding that I've actually talked with Jill about. I'm not sure Debbie was totally accurate on whether that was available or not, but we'll certainly pursue that. And then the other thing she talked about was use of targeted jobs. And we're certainly well aware of that program. We've done about 55 projects in that. But it is, and it's a function of getting the good leads as well--
Right.
--from the state and from others in our, in our own efforts, be able to use that program. We talk about that program all the time. We had a program, opportunity this, just this week, and we brought that up. So it's a great program. We've used it a lot, as you know. We'll continue to use it. And if there's some other ideas that she has, she has new responsibilities now. Her role has grown at the state level, and we'll certainly pursue any suggestions that she makes.
Well, she is asking us to bring her the suggestions and the ideas, her office.
Sure.
And they may be able to structure a program around it. So she said, even if we don't have a program that that would fall under, we can make a new program.
Sure.
Develop one, and they have done that. She gave a couple examples of small business that-- Develop one, and they have done that. She gave a couple examples of small business that did it in another town, and so she said, we've got money, we've got funding, and although it might not quite fit under a specific program...
A few of the references she's making to federal funds, we don't, we don't qualify for, because we're an entitlement community, but generally, they have those types of funds available, especially with a lot of the federal money now, but...
But I think bringing to state funds and help that her office can give us, so she just wants us to show up. That's what she was saying.
Be proactive.
Right, be proactive, and ask. Don't be afraid to ask, so...
And I think you do a great job. I wasn't saying that, Marty, and I know you could be at every meeting, but I think Renee and I spoke afterwards, and I know Julie did some conversations as well, and I think in your role, I think that's where you can be an asset.
And I know...
Bat for some of those programs.
He wants to mention it, but Renee's been pursuing a number of different grants for I West Coast. In fact, you were just talking about...
Yeah, I am actually headed to Des Moines March ninth to meet with Debbie regarding historic tax credits and a couple other programs that may help fund the Innovation Center, so we have been in contact, and we are... ...for opportunities.
Because that was one of them that she talked about that she liked and that thought it was creative, and then the other one was addressing homelessness and different creative programs that they had that I think would spur development and fit under yours, as well as Jill's kind of area, too, so.
We've never been shy about applying, so.
Great.
Why don't you tell her to do a tiny home? I'm excited. I'm sure that, that it won't be easy to get through our Design Review Committee, but the... Written and Centers article on tiny.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. That was very...
As you know, I've been for that for a long time, but we just don't seem to ever really want to do anything to kick that in around here. We want to make it difficult with lot sizes. We want to make it difficult with sewer hookups. We want to make it difficult in a lot of reasons, none of which make any sense to me if we really want to, you know. Go ahead and tell me I'm wrong, but it...
Jill Watershead, Neighborhood Services Manager, I can provide a little bit more information on how that project is a little bit different. So usually, you're right with lot sizes, that always becomes an issue. Because they have a main structure on site, they're considered accessory structures, and that's how we can get those through, so a little bit different.
Like a perfect structure, it falls under that? It falls under like an appurtenant structure?
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, an accessory structure.
That's what I'm saying. Why can't, I don't understand...
Well, I just had a conversation with a developer who's got a small piece of land that he would like to look into that. So it was a very positive conversation, and I said, you know, I would be in favor of something like that if there was someone living on site to help manage the grounds and, you know, to help the, whoever's going to be renting the spaces, living there, to help them with their daily needs. And he said that was their intent, so hopefully, I'll have some more conversation.
So along those lines, too, Dan and I were at a meeting Simco had right before the legislation session started, and there was a really interesting guy there that made a presentation on are cities building the right kind of housing for the needs that we have? And I was, I was fascinated by, by those, he had data to back it up, and with the price of housing. So I think we need to be looking at, and we are looking at, all different forms of housing and different sizes and shapes. And the data shows that a lot of times, it's the lack of the exact kind of housing that the market needs. For example, moving, moving empty nesters out of the big homes they have into townhomes and things, we need more of those as well to free that up for, for younger people to be able to buy, because it's so expensive to build a new one. So I, that was an eye-opening presentation for me, Dan. I know you talked about it, too, and I think that we'll pursue, as a team here, all the kinds of different housing options that can help solve our need for good quality housing.
I really believe that when I see a area set aside for tiny homes. I'm not saying to put them in a regular neighborhood, but we don't allow them anywhere under our present code.
We have to look at the codes. I bet you're right.
It's certainly going to take some code amendments.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll just add one more thing. I think the issue has been that the minimum square footage size is six forty, so yeah, it would be something that would have to change.
Right, and you still would have a minimum lot size that makes no sense under those circumstances. That, that's my point.
Thanks, Marty.
Item number six, Project 719201 Southeast Boarding Side Area Improvements, CIP Page one thirty-six. Report Page ten.
I included a memo that provided some additional information. I also went back to the council action that was taken in the year two thousand and polled the annexation agreement that everyone actually signed. And according to our staff, the discussions around this started back up again when the DOT property was annexed in. It looks like from our agreement that we agreed to do the design for the utilities by January one of two thousand and four. And so this just got brought up again when they were looking at the city limits around the new DOT property. And so then it got added back in the book, I believe. Was that a year ago, two years ago? And so that was the reason.
Going down behind Menards?
Mm-hmm.
That was a settlement of a lawsuit.
It was...
Yule property at the time.
Yep.
I remember it well, because I got named personally and didn't even know what it was about.
Yule Turkey Farm, family?
Yeah, it was the Yule farm down below, and, and the... Their lawsuit made some sense, not really, but because why did we put that bridge there if our intent wasn't to put a street there to connect? If you notice, there's a bridge, nothing goes under. About, about where the corner of Whispering Creek stuff begins, there's a bridge there. And that's where you're talking about, the utilities are going to go under that bridge, I think, right?
I don't know the specifics of that.
Because they said, we promised them different things over the years and never delivered, and I think this was a result, because that was about when I got sued, that was a result of, of that lawsuit to settle it. We agreed to do a study at least, or something out there.
So we were legally bound to do a study, or...
To design the utilities needed to service that area that's in the hashed mark on the map that I have there. Everyone within that area, well, twenty-three of the twenty-five property owners at the time signed it. They're recorded. So I don't know why it was never moved forward prior to oh-four, but going back, I think that was the reason why this, the sheet was added a couple of years ago.
Project 879018 West Seventh Street Corridor Improvement, CIP Page one forty, Report Page fifteen.
After our discussion, I went back, and I'm hoping I interpreted what everyone was saying correctly, but going to the four-way stop, that would be Ross Street over on West Seventh and Villa, and then catching that area between West Seventh and Wesley Parkway. Just a couple quick things about each area. The program, and it would be up to you to change as well, but the program is really geared towards commercial properties. We don't typically do residential. And so looking at the area that's added on the west side, there's about sixteen commercial properties in that area. The rest are all residential, and then between West Seventh and Wesley, there's about seventeen commercial properties. The rest are residential there, too. So it would be my recommendation, if we did extend, that we would limit it, continue to limit it to commercial properties. Within the current boundary of West Seventh, thirty-eight properties have participated, or they're under construction right now or under agreement with us. There's probably under ten left that I've ever talked to that are still interested, so we're getting near the end of that, for sure.
And I mean, I, you know this area well. Don't you think it makes sense for some of those properties? Like, I know Matthew and I were talking about a couple of them, that I think would be good candidates, and I think extending that area, it's revitalizing that corridor. And I think that your language addition makes sense. You know, none of us are trying to do anything residential, so even just including that, I think is just a smart move in any of the areas that we do, because this area is not unique. You might have that up in maybe Riverside, or maybe Leeds, or something like that. I don't think any of the other ones necessarily, but yeah.
And what we can do as a part of this, too, is we can target these two areas when we're doing the commercial projects for our residential rehab programs, too. We'll make sure we send out notices to them at the same time, letting them know that we have those, and kind of do like a mini target area for those, too.
I was just going to ask about, yes, if those two can go hand in hand. And oftentimes, when you see your neighbor doing something, you do it, you know, something similar, or get your juices flowing.
Over the years, I've had citizens comment from time to time about it would be nice to have a program for residential, but that'd be, that'll be a huge undertaking.
And we do, all of our programs, they do have to income qualify for, so sometimes that's a roadblock, but we do a lot of residential rehab throughout the whole city every year, so. And we did just receive those Healthy Homes funding, so we're doing radon mitigation everywhere we go. It gives us more funding to spend on each house, so you can always send them our way, and we can at least talk through and see if they would possibly income qualify.
That's on an as-need, case-by-case basis. I, they're talking in terms of targeting maybe a corridor, like we do at the commercial.
We do do that.
Yeah. Yeah, we, so, we, yeah, so Lyons Park is one that we're doing, that we're targeting right now. Doing a lot of full rehab in that area, yeah. We just don't have the money we used to have. We used to get double the amount of CDBG funds a year that we get now, so it's really hard to have multiple areas at once. So we have the citywide kind of emergency, and then we have the one target area right now.
Thank you. I really appreciate that you looked into this. I took Villa on the way here, down to West Seventh, and it really is just, I see a lot of possibility, and it's been such a hugely successful program. I can't believe there's only ten businesses that have not participated.
Well, ten that I've, I've talked to that haven't said no.
Oh, they haven't said no. I like that.
The other ones have said, no, not interested, for whatever reason, so. I would say under ten of like, oh, maybe, so.
Then you'll circle back and...
Yeah, yeah.
And Jill, I know that you've thought about this. You and I worked at least on one of the properties, West Seventh, thinking about accessibility as well, like when they are renovating, or no, we did two.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yep.
Um, I think that some of these older properties, and I've talked now with probably three different business owners that are not in these type of districts, but everyone is looking, like, everyone I talk to, and whether they're just giving me lip service, I don't know, want to make their space more accessible and more accommodating, but that can be expensive. I understand, you know, trying to update, trying to do those things can be pretty costly, and sometimes it's an opportunity. Like at Grilling Pharmacy, they didn't realize that a push-button type entry, you know, system wouldn't qualify, so that's something we need to add this year. I think just, yeah, anything we can do to talk to them about improved accessibility, because some of these are more historic structures or a little more out of date, and so, I appreciate it.
Next project, Project...
You, Jill.
379010 Tyson Events Center Remodel and Repair, CIP Page one fifty-two, Report Page seventeen.
Good morning. Following the initial discussion, we did reach out to IT, because they were the ones that provided the initial budget number of ninety thousand. We asked if they would visit with Tyson Events Center staff and actually go to the facility. They did. They looked over everything, and they have an adjusted estimate of seventy-seven thousand dollars.
From the ninety thousand?
Yes.
That we had. Got a question for you on your note on page seventeen, about the replacement, the switch upgrades, thirty thousand, and additional network cabling. What is that?
I don't know the specifics of all the technical stuff of that. That would be an IT question, but they just said that as a note, as to why it's a little bit more expensive. They said that in all the other city facilities, they already have done those processes, and they just haven't done that in this facility yet. Yeah, it's, so when we do the new phones, we have to do all of this, too.
Part of it.
Trying to get everybody the same throughout the city.
Yes, yeah.
Is it the seventy-seven, then? Does that encompass the thirty and the sixteen?
Yes. They're just explaining why it's more money than you would initially think for phones. Not just the phone, yes.
Mayor, was it exactly that?
You don't have to say, I would not mind.
Right, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Jess.
Project 459005 Annual Athletic Maintenance, CIP Page one eighty-eight, Report Page eighteen.
Talking about twelve thousand dollars shelter and just a little over ten thousand, about eleven thousand dollars for the six-three row bleachers.
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. Yes, that's their list of anticipated improvements with the, with the funds that are available. And turned in their paperwork yet, so we're withholding those until they, they give us everything we need, but they're eager to get going with those, so they're working with us on that.
How big is their shelter?
I will have to check.
Twelve by twelve?
Yeah.
You know, at our church, we put a... Probably a thirty by fifty for less than that money, so that must be one nice shelter.
It's showing on page nineteen.
That's just an advertisement, though.
Yeah.
Because if you look at the...
It ranges from six by twelve to...
Yeah, it's just showing you what it will, what it can look like, one of the models.
But it's, it's right at a hundred dollars a square foot.
But up here, it says, yeah, that is a hundred bucks a square foot. That's a lot.
Thank you for open-ended...
What I was wondering, too, Matt, is...
It's because it's a kit.
I don't know who built this one, but it reminded me a lot of, I couldn't get out there to see them, but at least it looks like the ones at the, geez, pickleball courts.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean? In between, isn't that essentially...
It's a mirrors our, our style, yeah.
Yeah, and so I wonder what they...
And I think that one was close to this price as well.
I was going to say, I wonder what their bid...
It just depends on the quality and the look.
Yeah.
I think it's expensive because it's a kit. Everything's pre-cut and ready for them.
No, but they all are. Those guys came in from Kansas City at our church, and they started at five o'clock and nine-thirty, they drove away.
Oh.
Like machines putting that together.
Well, I would just hope, Matt, and I know your staff will work through this, but thinking long-term about where this goes and how that works into the space, if we would reutilize or do something different out there, you know.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Just being proactive with that.
I think it'll get used no matter what.
Oh, yeah.
You know, for...
I just mean as far as placement, you know what I mean? You don't want to pour a pad and have all of that infrastructure, and then be like, gosh, we really should have reconfigured this to a different area, or a different area made sense.
Has that spot already been decided for sure?
I know.
What's that?
Where this, spot where this is going to land, has it already been decided?
No, we're going to work with them on that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Good.
But yeah, to the mayor's point, if they're under utilizing those fields and the city needs to reassess, what are we doing with that land? Is there some other better way to repurpose or reuse or a different contract? I just want us to have some flexibility with it.
The goal would always be to maximize the amount of playing space out there. We don't want to put a shelter where we could have a field, so that will be taken under consideration.
Did they, do they lock the field so nobody can get on there?
Right.
It's just, to me, is it...
Not always, but I would say most of the time.
Unbelievable tragedy to have that complex and drive by every day. I think we need to have these guys come and explain. And Witt called me yesterday.
Yeah, they had a good meeting last night.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that we stay on top of that. Witt did not have to go find a field to play soccer when there's one a block away from the...
No, that was about a two-hour meeting, and it was, there was a lot of cooperation both, both ways. They're on the, they're on the same page. I'll give you a formal update on that. They're working on a couple more details.
Okay, very good. Well, I will be watching those fields again this year, and if those fields are not being used, I hope that we will do something different, because I, it's, it's really not easy to drive to the Riverside or to the South Sioux field to try to get out after soccer games are over on one road.
Yeah, and we've communicated that to them and told them what our desires for the usage of the complex to be, and their lease is up on December thirty-first.
Thank you.
Of this year, December thirty-first of this year.
All the leases are up on December thirty-first. We keep them on the same schedule.
I had a question about last year. So last year, we had some additional ARPA funds that we funneled into some of these athletic fields. Do we have a list of the improvements that were made within this last year?
Yeah, we have all their work plans on file.
Okay.
Yep.
Could you possibly send a memo out about that? It doesn't affect this year's budget at all, but it's still just, it's a nice to know. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Project 459058 Emerald Ash Bore, CIP Page two oh-two, Report Page twenty-two.
We had some discussion about this at the CIP budget hearing, and we have no problem knocking that down to about five hundred thousand dollars a year and using that as the work plan moving forward.
Making motions on this stuff as we go. Making motions on this stuff as we go.
Yes.
How, I guess I'm kinda curious, is the contract, they're picking the trees up.
Mm-hmm.
We let them just lay there for, in the case on Douglas Street, they laid there for about two weeks, which was-
Yeah, I didn't think it was going. I'll check on that. I didn't think they were supposed to be staying that long.
It's, it appears they're cleaning them. They've got big trucks now and they're cleaning them as they go, but I, I mean, I don't know that it's terribly bad, but it certainly makes you think when you, it's hanging out over the edge of the road, you gotta be careful driving up Douglas Street, you did. So how did you pick, I'm just curious, how'd you pick where, where you were going? How were you notifying? Because I heard from one business owner on, you know, Oakley, Oakview or whatever they call Oakley Properties, they didn't even know anybody was gonna cut their trees.
So, yeah, that, they-
We went before that.
Either everybody got a letter, and if we got a bounce back on the letter, they hand-delivered the notices.
Yeah, because Kelly explained that in the budget hearing. Because, Mayor, I heard the same thing, or there were residents that were questioning why they were tagged or why they were marked, and Kelly explained that it was like, look, they-
That's what I'm saying, that if all that's happening, why are we still getting people asking us what we're doing? And it's all-
So, the, the one thing I could think of is if they don't own-
Correct.
And the notice went to the owner and not the renter.
And the people that I knew that were speculating were just saying, oh, all these trees are tagged and marked. What is it? Is it, they thought maybe it was a road project.
Yeah, so the people that weren't-
They weren't the homeowners themselves.
Notified personally may have some questions.
Exactly, yeah.
Correct.
If you wanna, if you wanna reduce those down, you have to do a motion.
I'll move that. Second.
Kane?
Hi.
I have a, I do have a question, Matt. So, is this a three-year workout program? It's twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, so it's a million and a half total?
Ten years.
Yeah, we had, originally, we had-
What's the projected work program at half a million dollars a year?
Yeah, so we originally had a million dollars a year for five years, so this would spread it out.
But that's not-
I don't know that, we don't know that it'll take that.
Originally, we said it was gonna be seven to ten million bucks.
We don't know that it'll take that.
Okay. And that, and the tree stumps that are left, that are unsightly, those are gonna be at least taken down to the level of the-
I need to check on that. I think so.
Is that what's going on in Jackson Street?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, they're not even, it's not even a clean cut on the stumps.
I'll check on that and get back.
Yeah, it's pretty much an eyesore.
Are you guys cut, taking the trees?
I don't, no, we're not doing any of it.
The other day, when they were taking them down, your, your, uh, your tree grinder was driving up-
Okay.
And stopped, so.
Uh, some of those trees, Dan, you're referring to maybe for our Thirtieth Street, uh, Pier Street project.
No, this is down on like Twelfth Street, Gordon.
On that one? Good.
It's, it's his contractor, I'm pretty sure, because it's that guy that's got that big claw that can take a tree down and never climb it, is what I, you're talking about, I think, aren't you?
I, I think so, and then, well, then the stumps, I, I think that was also in the contract, that those would be, they'd either be removed or, I, I don't remember if they were taken down.
I can't imagine we would leave this down there, so we'll, we'll address that either way.
That might just be a temper.
Well, they'll probably come in later and do-
With the grinder?
I think their primary focus is getting the trees down.
I would guess.
And come back later.
Okay. Yeah, if you could confirm that.
Yep, I can do that.
That'd be great, thank you. Sorry.
Matt, when they grind the stump, do they usually wait until the, like, the frost is out?
If there's frost in the, in the ground, because they don't want to mess up blades.
Yeah, we had a tree removed-
They're not gonna take stumps out until spring.
Right.
I would imagine.
And then they came back and ground the stump out, because it goes actually below the surface when they grind it in, so-
They'll get into the dirt.
That's what's probably, is what we're gonna see then, we're gonna-
I would imagine.
Dump, yep. But if they're all jagged, to Dan's point-
Yeah, I-
That might not be a good idea.
Clean cut.
Cleaner cut.
That's what I want to really focus on.
Okay.
Okay. You wanna start over on the vo- I'm sorry.
Now we're going to see stumps.
Okane?
Hi.
Shaner?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
I move to reduce the Tyson Event Center by thirteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okane?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Okay, next item, number eleven.
So the only two.
Project four five nine zero five nine, IBP Ice Center Enhancement, CIP page two oh four, report page twenty-two.
Kirk Lukart of Sulayutaki is here to provide a quick update on that.
Yeah, on the raise, fundraising.
Morning.
Take some of that Tyson stock and sell it and just fund it yourself. We appreciate all the good work you do.
Well, if you haven't sold all your Tyson stock by now, you're in big trouble.
I think you're probably right.
It's a mess, it's a mess.
Have your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, uh, Kirk Lukart, K-I-R-K, last name L-U-K-E-H-A-R-T. My address is three five seven Murfield Court, Dakota Dune, South Dakota.
Where are you at?
Uh, and specifically relates to your budget hearing, notes you have here. Yesterday, I spoke with a donor who wants to remain anonymous right at this point, who's committed the fifty thousand dollars to get us to our goal of one point six million.
Excellent.
Saying that, next steps, the, the estimate from FTH and Associates for the one point six million has some age on it, so yesterday, yesterday I authorized them to go out and hire a professional estimator to get us a more current, uh, number, and at that point in time, we'll take a look at what the new estimate is and figure out next step from there. Either that, if, either we will come back to the council and ask permission to move forward with the bidding process, or we will continue to raise money to try to get to the new number. Uh, we have some irons in the fire relative to fundraising. We haven't stopped. We won't stop. Uh, we've got some pretty good, uh, ideas of what, uh, some new donors will do for us.
Good job.
Yeah, the deal was if you reached your fifty thousand dollar goal, then we increase ours by seventy-five thousand.
Yep.
Okay.
Did you get my friend Lazard?
What's that?
Did you call my friend Lazard yet?
Bobby, Robbie?
No, well, yeah, Robbie, too, yeah.
I am setting up a meeting with Lance Hedquist, so, so I, because I've known Lance for a long time, you know, he's a big-time hockey guy with his family and so forth, and so I've got a meeting set with him to see what they will or won't do. At worst, he'll give me some names, maybe in South Sioux I can contact.
Good.
Thanks to everybody.
I'll move we increase the funding by seventy-five thousand.
You say you'll move that?
Second.
I moved it, yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Okane?
Hi.
Shaner?
Hi.
Project four five nine two one two, annual Lewis and Clark Park Improvement, CIP page two sixteen, report page two twenty-two.
We're getting-
Talking joints, you're not caulked under seat.
The joints, yes.
That's a good-
And it is silicone.
That, that, well, it might not be, but anyway, that-
No, it says it right here in the proposal.
Okay, that's a good plan. That-
Yeah, okay, so we're on the same page now.
Daryl and I were talking, you were saying you were gonna caulk the whole-
Well, not the seats themselves, under the seats where the joints are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That you should do, that's just good preventative.
Yeah, it's time.
Is this based on, did I read this right? It's a September twenty twenty-one bid?
Yeah, we'll have to-
As a report?
Yeah.
So that's gonna probably-
We'll have to update it, but I, it wasn't for the full mount, so I, it's, it's-
Just a partial.
Padding a little bit. There's a little bit of padding in the budget.
What's our budget?
One seventy-five.
We don't need to change anything there.
Project four five nine two one four, aquatic copper, aquatic comprehensive plan, CIP, CIP page two eighteen, report page twenty-two.
Justine's here, let me grab her.
You got creative.
So we move some money around, so we can-
She brought her sidekick.
Accommodate, uh, doing the splash pad in FY twenty-four.
I, yes, I did bring, um, my sidekick, my partner in crime, or one of. Um, so, yeah, I was told that you guys were able to rearrange some money to possibly still make the splash pad happen this summer.
Yep, I'll move that. Second.
Waters?
So it's for this summer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, aye.
Moore?
Hi.
Okane?
Hi.
Shaner?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Passes five zero.
Thanks for your efforts on this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for making this happen. There's so many families that are gonna greatly appreciate it, as well as my own.
All right, thank you.
Have a wonderful day.
Thanks for the two of you.
Project four five nine three two one, Floyd Trail Connector, CIP page two twenty-four, report page twenty-two.
So it does appear that we're gonna have to go the alternative route, which isn't ideal. Uh, we'll-
I'm curious, Matt, it, it says here that they don't want you on top of the, of the dike.
No, we can't, we can't be in the bank.
Oh, you can't be in the bank? I guess I've read-
So top of dike was good.
Which is where it is now.
Um-
Not down there.
Not down there.
Oh, okay.
Well, on the existing Floyd Trail is-
Yeah, 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 that's what I'm talking about.
But we were hoping to do this like we did on the Perry Creek Trail, where you're actually going down the bank.
Going down into it, yeah.
Why would they care?
There's a, there's a, a bench, as they call it. I don't know what term that is with Army Corps of Engineers, that it's non-occupiable.
Bench?
Yeah, not like a bench that you sit on, but-
Like a shelf, ledge, a bank?
Yes.
Is that what a bench is, Gordon? A ledge?
So it's-
Is there a way to appeal that, do you think?
So this, probably not, but even if there was, the timeline of this project being Destination Iowa, I don't know that we can, I don't know that we necessarily give up on it long-term, but for the purposes of this project, I think we're in the process of having to move forward with the alternative route. Yeah. So we'll go top of bank everywhere we can, but then we're kinda going up and around.
The memo says you were consulting, so the consulting's done with the Army Corps? That's been decided?
Yep.
Project five six nine zero zero one Cemetery Improvement, CIP page two thirty, report page twenty-four.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Stay there.
Well, I mean, I still think that somebody should at least contact the old Morning Side Country Club, because the Graceland Cemetery is, for Morning Side people, obviously is a preferred cemetery, and you're not going to get people to go to Logan, or then where I would say eighty-five percent of the Morning Side people don't even know where it is. So that's gonna be a di- I mean, I'm, I'm glad you got a lot of the land there, but it's gonna be difficult, so maybe we finally will get out of the cemetery business, which I think is a mistake, because look at-
Mm-hmm.
The private ones that are not maintaining, and we certainly don't necessarily want to take that over, because I'm sure they sold all the lots, money's gone, but-
As Kelly had mentioned last time, I think that conversation had be had, has had, happened in the past, but it's probably been a while.
They have no use for that land.
Right, it's probably have, it's probably time to revisit that.
Yeah, when they built that subdivision, and I'm not sure we do either. It's very hilly-
Mm-hmm.
On that backside, but it's, it's attached to, and you could put a road off of Lincoln Way that would basically allow you to drive in there. I don't know, it just, I, I think we're, I wa- I was somewhat shocked that there's only eighty-eight hundred lots left in-
Graceland.
Graceland.
Are we trending away from traditional burials? I feel like we are.
Well, you're still selling lots every year.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
Based on the amount of deeds that I'm signing on a weekly basis, I would say not a, not a lot, some.
But people who have cremation still will bury-
Yes.
Burns, too, so.
The problem is the lots that nobody's ever gonna use, but you can't do anything with.
Why do we have ones that-
Well, like my mom had four lots.
Oh, mhm.
And two husbands and her, and that fourth lot's never gonna be used, so.
That is true.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Have to think about a program for that.
It can be resold, but-
It can be, but you have to find a person-
You gotta find the owner and somebody to buy it.
Yeah, one, you gotta find one. I mean, I, I just kept it in case somebody in our family had an emergency, is-
Mm-hmm.
Or, or almost if you could donate it back, because there's so many people that can't afford these.
Right, that's what I was just thinking about, a program.
You can donate it back, but you still have a cost associated with that in every cemetery.
Because there's a deed with every-
Right. They're pretty, they're reasonable. Private cemeteries are not so reasonable.
And to your point, not-
It costs almost as much as an attorney to read an abstract. Very pricey.
First time I've been compared to a cemetery. Things aren't looking too bright today for me.
I don't know, I guess I'm the only one that feels that way, but I, I just think it would hurt to at least-
We'll have the conversation.
Subject, but see.
Yeah, I think be proactive about it. I think that's a good idea.
Project one three eight zero zero two, annual street light repair and maintenance, CIP page two fifty-two, report page thirty-three.
After reading this report, I think you should never, we, we were sold a bill of goods when we said we should own our own streetlights.
And I-
I'd like somebody to do a cost analysis of what, what we're saving on the electricity And I, I'd like somebody to do a cost analysis of what, what we're saving on the electricity a year on those lights and what we're paying a year for maintenance.
I, I would agree with that. First of all, I appreciate what staff does to make our own repairs, but twenty, twenty repairs, one hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. That's a lot of money. I wish we had a better way of doing this, but I'm not sure what that better way is, Mayor.
Well, I think, they told us when we took over the streetlights back in the nineties that the difference in the rate, which I don't believe is that much difference, would justify, I don't think it does. And we ought to quit owning streetlights and make Mid-America put them in again.
Says Mid-American owns and operates approximately eighty percent of the streetlights on city streets.
All, our twenty percent have all come since about nineteen ninety.
Since that, we've been acquiring those since nineteen ninety?
We don't acquire them. Every new light that goes in, we, we assume. Which we're not obligated to do. We were just told that it would be cost-effective back then. I don't think it is now. But, somebody needs to do an analysis. I'm not, you know, I don't know how many, what we're saving, but it'd be easy to figure. You got, you got twenty. Mid-American operates twenty, so we've got, what, twelve hundred? And, and see how much we save a month, and I bet you we're losing money.
Yeah, we could look into it, but my guess is we are better off with Mid-American owning the lighting lights.
What's the difference in rates, you know?
Kurt Frank, Labor Supervisor. So, yeah, the city owns and maintains eighteen hundred and sixty-one streetlights.
What, what, what do we save on those eighteen hundred lights by us owning them?
Well, I don't think we save anything. We have to maintain them, and we still pay for-
No, no, I'm talking, what, what's your rate? There's a difference in the, in the tariff that Mid-America can charge for those lights. They can't charge us the full rate. That's why we went into that. Do you have any idea of what that tariff is?
Yeah, the, the, the rate is, is ranges from seven twenty-eight per month per light, up to around thirty-two dollars per month, per light.
On the ones we own?
Yeah.
But what about, what do they charge us?
That's, it's the same rate.
No.
It, it depends on whether the light is on a wooden pole or a steel pole.
Right.
Whether it's overhead wire.
Right. But I'm saying that if we own the pole, our electricity rate is less. We don't, we were not supposed to be paying, why would we own lights if the, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That's why they talked us into that. That's what I'm asking, is it, take a, take a steel pole and figure out what they charge you, and then what they charge you for the, for the ones they own, and then you can figure basically how much we save a year on that electricity. Is it worth what we're doing here, is all that?
Right. Mayor, we'll get, we'll get you a council memo on that.
You know what I'm saying. There is a different tariff.
Right. Well, there's supposed to be. Hopefully, there is.
There better be.
I do want to point out in the memo is stated, staff was able to perform several more extensive repairs utilizing the upgrade maintenance electrician position previously would have needed to be contracted out. So, the, using the staff has helped a lot, but there were a total of just under four hundred repairs and inspections.
Correct.
And I don't know how often we do the inspections, or if that's just a, on a case-by-case, if there's an issue with the streetlight.
Yeah, it's typically complaint driven.
Yeah, complaint driven.
Yeah.
From the mayor. Because nobody else has a yellow legal pad in their car.
Are you talking about the lights?
The mayor also gave us the phone numbers.
The lights, the colored lights?
I complain about every kind, any outage, I get-
We get lots of texts.
Yeah, Bob gets lots of text messages.
Well, that's, I mean, that's the way to do it unfortunately, because, I don't know, if they're out, they're out. You need to, you need to report it.
They've been out on Hamilton Boulevard, the one east side was out. Now, they can't get two fixed on the west side after four emails or text messages, but-
Yeah, they don't have a indicator that would pop up.
The biggest problem is you have to determine whether you own it or not.
Yeah.
And, and that takes time.
Were the ones we own just totally freckled throughout the city, or is there a block of them?
Yeah, there's really no rhyme or reason. All I can say is that the luminaires on the traffic signal lights are all city-owned. So, but, yeah, I have maps that show what we own versus what Mid-American owns. And the city, the website also has a place where you can report a streetlight out, and that comes directly to me. Then I determine whether it's city-owned or Mid-American-owned.
Right.
Do you have the map with you?
The what?
Have that map with you?
I don't. No, it's, it's pretty thick. And the cities is, is on our ArcMap. It's electronic.
Oh, okay.
But the Mid-American map is-
I thought maybe you had a list or something there with you?
Eighteen hundred light, eighteen hundred plus lights.
Yeah.
And what you're not counting in is, we had extensive cost putting those in, which we would have with Mid-America because they charge. I get that, but it's not like we had a, have a huge savings by doing that. So.
So, is the consensus we don't want to purchase any more streetlights?
Well, I don't want to make that decision until it-
We will, we will get a council memo that shows the cost analysis.
See what the real advantages are and disadvantages. Okay. Thanks for what you do for making those repairs though on our own.
Project, sorry. Project 139007 Annual Intersection and Traffic Signal Improvements, CIP page 256, report page 34.
This is where the report shows, Gordon, it's seventy-five hundred to ten thousand dollars per intersection, but what, the question I had was the memo kind of alluded to there might be certain areas that would be good for these kind of inter, uh, signals, traffic control systems. But, but is there any way to just, is there a blanket way of saying, well, these areas, or?
Not really. I mean, because there could be some areas where you're not going to want them when they're next to-
Residential.
Residential and-
Yeah. Yes.
Countdown to annoys, or just annoy?
Count, I think the countdown's on them.
It's both.
I don't know why we would have, when you spend three hundred thousand dollars for an intersection, that you wouldn't add seventy-five hundred bucks. It makes but your manual on uniform traffic control devices doesn't require it.
Does not require it.
I don't care.
We can certainly put those in on our new, on our new signals, if that's what you-
Well, and I would say, I mean, my, the point I had to bring in part of this up is I just think anytime there's going to be an increase walking or traffic as far as people utilizing those, like in our downtown, I think would especially be important, or even where there might be developments, or bikes, or people walking, that would be my intention, because I agree to the mayor that it's well worth it if there are going to be a lot of people walking to try to be more inclusive and at least let people know of when it's a green arrow or walking one direction or another.
Maybe Gordon, since it's all spread out throughout the community, you know, going forward at least, we could look at doing the auditory signals.
On a case-by-case basis.
For the new, for the new ones, and then we can, I guess it'd be a monumental task to start identifying the existing ones and what it would take to change those out. Or to add to. I don't know if you change them out or add to them, or what you do with them, or-
When you're doing repair or-
Or if a, or if a signal has to be replaced for some reason.
Now, see, the signal we're doing right now at Floyd and Outer, that one's already been bid out, it's already been awarded. Those were not included on that, so.
But, if you're talking a change order of ten thousand dollars, I certainly think you ought to do that. That's a big, long intersection for handicapped people to navigate without some-
Gordon, why don't you just see what the contractor would say that has the bid about a change order? I think that's a, a good suggestion.
Who got the job? It hasn't bid yet, I don't think, Gordon.
It has, it's, um, INA.
Who?
INA. INA Construction got it. They usually do concrete, but they're subbing that portion out, because there's a lot of concrete work to do.
Yeah, I mean, I, I trust your judgment on a case-by-case basis as far as the inclusion. I mean, I would, I would err on the side of including them because we don't know where future development may happen, but yeah, I trust your judgment on that.
So, do you want a memo on how much it's going to be, or do you want to just go ahead if it's under the change order amount?
I'd like to see what it is, but I'd be for it.
So, yes, if you can let us know.
Yeah, I'll-
Yep, please.
Thanks, Gordon.
Thank you.
Project 139009 City Traffic Control System, CIP page 258, report page 35.
How much is that project?
Gordon, on the, on this memo, uh, on the, let's see, it was on the, um, I don't know, it was the paragraph talking about South Lakeport and Sargent, the Singing Hills Water Tank. The project is not started. What's the, what's the timeframe on that? On the project that's not started? Or am I reading, am I reading that incorrect?
Yeah, the second portion hasn't been started yet.
But that's budgeted in FY twenty-three?
Yes. I'm-
It's a Simcoe project.
Was it?
Yeah.
Oh, that one?
Oh, you're looking at the next one, two fifty-eight then.
What's the time?
Fiber?
Yeah.
They're studying the whole corridor.
Oh, okay.
What's the timing on that, then?
It's a Simcoe project. Uh, they're studying the whole corridor, so.
Well, I got a question.
Hey.
You say that the project, the WCICC, who's not here to answer the question, doesn't think re, co-locating with MetroNet is feasible consideration. Guess what? Until you give me some data that says that, just because Mr. Malloy says it doesn't make sense, doesn't make sense to me. Tell me, you're going to spend three hundred thousand dollars, you're going to have maintenance on it over the years, but you guys can't tell me what it costs per month to, to buy, to rent lines? And if it's twenty-five or thirty bucks a month, you know how many years you have to go to justify this, and you got, you don't have the maintenance anymore? I mean, we, we've gotten into this business, and again, I keep getting on, we run hundreds and hundreds of pairs and use three or four. Who else does that but government?
Each, the traffic signal has twelve, twelve, twelve strand.
Okay, you got twelve. How many pairs you running then?
Okay.
How many you running, Kurt?
I don't know. I just know the traffic signals use twelve strand.
Okay. You're probably running ninety-six thousand, but anyway, that, that's what fiber is, right?
Yeah.
That's what I don't get. You, John Malloy and, and I love Glenn, uh, Glenn Setteby, but they could never tell you why, and it's time we ask the question. Three hundred thousand dollars will go a long ways somewhere else if you're talking thirty dollars a month.
Okay.
So, I, before this project starts, somebody's got to tell me what the cost would be to rent. MetroLink is out in that neighborhood as we speak. And there's no way you can't tie into their stuff. So, maybe the rest of them are okay, but I'm not. I want, I want more than John doesn't think it's a good idea. There's a lot of things in there I don't think are a good idea, but we're doing them anyway, so I guess I'd just like to have more.
Do we have any-
Glenn's been still consulting.
That's what we get, whether we put or not, give me.
The proposal from what we've talked-
Wherever we drop lines, we at least have it in front of them. For somebody else to come in and install lines.
I know, but I feel like-
Should have a good working relationship.
The left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing yet.
Exactly, yeah. What's that?
With the fiber.
We don't.
I know.
We should have never gotten into business.
Right, I know that John Malloy's group, they don't want to be in charge of it. He's-
Well, I don't know. I like that we have fiber, and I like that we own it. I'm saying we just are, it's an, it's an asset that's unrealized. You know what I mean? We've talked about that forever.
That's my point.
How we could monetize, how we could utilize, how we could-
We're not going to do it, then we might be better off. I mean, we spent millions of dollars putting fiber in this city fiber around town, and I can almost guarantee you it would have been much cheaper to-
Rent it.
Rent.
Piggyback, or, yeah.
The school district runs to all their schools. They don't run to their schools. They have FiberCom run to their schools. They've at least done a cost analysis, I would suspect, but-
Well, what are we going to do with this?
Well, they, I, I would move that, that no money be expended on this project until better information is given to the council.
Sounds good.
I'd leave it in, but I'd-
Further information.
There a second to that?
I did.
Call the pro, please.
And tell, uh, you find out the comparison with MetroNet?
Well, I don't, not even saying MetroNet. I don't care who it is. I, you know, FiberCom or anybody.
We currently have a, a single response for an RFP that is to help manage our fiber system. We hope to have something by mid-April on whether to proceed with that organization or not.
Good. Well, maybe they can give you an answer.
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Project 719130 Annual Rail Crossing Improvement Program, and Project 719026 Rail Crossing Improvement Leeds and Riverside. CIP pages three oh six and page two eighty-seven, report page thirty-six.
Any idea when we'll actually have a quiet zone in Sioux City?
As soon as we get some of these projects complete?
But the problem is we scatter, we go here, and then we go here. I mean, shouldn't we have done, like-
Completed an area?
Yeah, I mean, we, you were, almost had Leeds done, and then you went to Riverside.
Well, we're still waiting on some stuff to be done in Leeds, too.
No, I know that, but, but the two or three intersections you did in Riverside, you know, I don't know. I, I don't know, we spent all this money and we still, you know, I get to four o'clock in the morning, get to hear the Chicago Northwestern blow the whistle, even though I don't think they need to at that particular point because they're just running up the track, but will the railroads actually believe it's a quiet zone when you get done, or otherwise, why are we even spending this money?
That is, that is the intent, yeah.
And is downtown, are we, do we have the major intersections now all downtown covered, or no, not?
Not quite. Yeah, but-
I was trying to think.
Got to do some stuff on Court Street.
Yeah.
Yeah. Brittany Anderson, Senior Civil Engineer. Um, we're actively working on projects in all three quiet zones. Downtown, we have a quiet zone on three crossings, and we still have Iowa Court, and Virginia, and Jackson will be the next one. We did Jackson and got improvements this last construction season, and we've gone through the design on Court. So, as soon as the rail does their funding and their project for the signals, we'll move forward on that. And then Virginia and Iowa, we've done diagnostic reviews, so we're coordinating with them on those designs. So, our intent for downtown will be to submit the notice of intent yet this year for the quiet zone, and then it'll go through the point system and whether or not we qualify, and then we'll finish out those projects.
So, we've done all this work, but we don't necessarily know if we'll even get a quiet zone?
We've done our analysis on the point system, so based on our side, we see that it'll qualify, but it'll be up for them to do the final review.
And them at the railroad?
Yes.
So, Gordon, the, the three options that are discussed in the memo, the first option is the one that's in FY twenty-five. Do we need to take any kind of action today on that?
Are you talking the Riverside one?
Ri, yes. The last, your last CIP budget paragraph on page thirty-seven talks about the three options above that, one, two, and three. Basically, it's the timeframe. One is two years, and one's four years, and the other's ten-plus years.
Yeah, so that's where the, the Riverside Quiet Zone, the Brunner Street, or Brunner Avenue Crossing, right now, it's a public crossing and it serves those two properties. So, we need direction. If what we put in for the budget would be acquisition and closing that crossing with those two properties, other alternatives would be to provide them access off West Nineteenth and close the crossing, or pursue signalization of the crossing through the rail.
Is Brunner where the construction yard is? No, Brunner's down the old dump road?
Yes.
There's a storage building there. This guy's renting out.
But right- It's been four hundred thousand to-
But right now, we have the first option that we in, in FY twenty-five. Isn't that in the-
Correct.
CIP now? So, do we need to make any, I mean, is there a reason to decide that today? Whether we want option two or option three, whether that goes in FY twenty-five? I mean, I might be misinterpreting your memo, but it looked like we were talking about three different options. Do, do we need to can, give those consideration today and have discussion on them?
Certainly can, if you know what the direction you want. However, it could change in next year's budget when she submits it, too, so those are two options. If things change between now and then, it's always an option to update the plan.
Have you talked to the owner to see if they're willing to sell?
Yeah, we met with them, and we already did a, um, appraisal on the property.
How much was that appraisal?
Um.
Roughly?
That was about four hundred.
Yeah.
Four hundred?
They want quite a bit more.
In the appraisal.
Well, the estimate's showing it's seven hundred thousand. Is that for the implementing the quiet zone as well?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's other things involved.
Total pack, yeah, it's a total package.
Yes.
Them for that purpose, can you?
I doubt it, because it's not a, there's no utility or public purpose. It would just be to close the crossing, so they wouldn't have access then.
We have the right to always close the problem, but then they have the right to sue for compensation. But the compensation would be based upon an appraisal, not based upon what they think necessarily.
Well, it sounds like we'll know more this coming year then. I mean, if it's in FY twenty-five, there's really no need-
We don't really need to choose between the one, two, three today.
No. We, we need to talk to them, the other property owners more.
Okay.
Because they own the property to the north where, uh, an alternative access could be made.
Well, they own two pieces.
Yeah, but that one is fronting West Nineteenth, and it's not in use. It's-
That where they took all those trees down?
Or what?
That where they took all those trees down?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Project 719262 Eleventh Street, Grandview to Douglas, CIP page three eighteen, report page thirty-eight.
Conclusion is we own the eighty-foot wide parcel. The city does.
And it is a parcel at this point. It hasn't reverted back to right-of-way. Or we haven't converted it back to right-of-way.
Okay.
Project 549196 Pulaski Park Drainage Project, CIP page three ninety, report page number thirty-nine.
I read this memo, and I'm completely confused. You're going to take a south ball field and make a lake, basically? No?
No, uh-
He's going to try to work upstream.
Well, yeah, I know, but-
Minimize what comes downstream.
Yep, and we don't know if it's feasible yet, so this is what we hope to use that, um, SRF-sponsored money for, the one point nine million that-
Well, that's like you'll, you did at the mall, try to do some modifications and slow the flow.
Yep, yep, with small bio swells and little rock dams and stuff like that. But, we're, we're working with Impact Seven G right now to see if this is feasible. If not, then we'll provide another alt, opportunity to use this somewhere else in the watershed and then bring that to you guys.
Project 519264 Pourbacks, CIP page number four thirty-two, report number four, page forty-one.
Twenty-one openings.
It's probably way more than that right now. Brad Pitt's Utilities Director, the name banks have been pretty persistent, so there's probably a few more than that out there now. The, the memos changed a little bit since we talked, or since I wrote this, actually. Uh, we did bid the pourbacks. Uh, two contractors were low. You'll be seeing that come into council for approval on the twenty-seventh. Uh, we did bid the pourbacks. Uh, two contractors were low. You'll be seeing that come into council for approval on the twenty-seventh.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, we have the technical changes for CIP.
I'll be down to one motion, can it? The technical changes.
Motion will be at the end unless you want to pull something for a separate vote. I'll just read through them.
So we'll continue with these all the way through technical changes or we're going to approve up to twenty-two?
We've already looked up through twenty-two.
Vote approved. It would go through the CIP technical changes on P four, number thirty-three.
Twenty-three through thirty-three. The CIP. Be like our consent agenda. Pull it for a.
Well, I'll read through them and we'll approve it way at the, all the way at the end with the other technical changes.
Or even the operating technical.
Yep. Unless you pull it out.
But as we go through those now, we can pull one out.
If you want. Oh, yep. CIP technical changes. Project six six three one six two, South Bridge Rail, adjusting funding to fifty percent IDOT rail grant and fifty percent transfer in down to TIF in FY twenty-four and twenty-five. Number twenty-four, project six six three three eight four, Seeing Hills Development, moving funds from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five to unprogrammed. Project four five nine three zero two, City Trails, revising the work plan, changing geo bonding to a hundred thousand in FY twenty-four and seven hundred and sixty-five thousand in FY twenty-five. Project four five nine three one seven, Big Sioux Crossing, revising the work plan, changing geo bonding from one point one nine four million. Two zero two, South Lewis Boulevard Reconstruction, moving funds from FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six to unprogrammed.
Excuse me, just for a minute. Matt, on these trail technical changes, you're, you're in agreement with those, correct? I mean, staff would speak up on these two.
No, I'm the one that recommended them based on timing of the projects. We can easily move it around to accommodate the splash pad.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Project, um, did I say, yeah, I did. Um, project seven five nine one one four, Annual Sidewalk Ramp Program. Move three Grandview Boulevard crossings from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-four, increasing the FY twenty-four geo bonds to four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
Where is that? Where's, where are those three? I'm going to think.
Go for the R. The, the red ones that were suggested in the, um.
Oh, yeah.
CIP budget, moving forward.
Project five three nine zero zero six, Wastewater Treatment Plant Facility Plan Improvements, revising the work plan, adding SRF funding in FY twenty-four through FY twenty-six, adjusting the SRL funding in FY twenty-seven and changing the unprogrammed amounts. Project five three nine one one seven, Wastewater Treatment Plan, Annual Renewal Modifications. Revising the work plan, removing sewer abated geo bonds in FY twenty-four, SRL funding in FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six. The unprogrammed funding and adjusting the transfer in sewers, sewer fund to two hundred and fifty thousand in FY twenty-four and two, four hundred and sixty-five thousand in FY twenty-five. Project five three nine two zero seven, Lift Station Improvements, revising the work plan, removing SRF funding in FY twenty-four through FY twenty-seven and changing the SRL funding to transfer in sewer funds in FY twenty-eight. Project five, five one nine two six eight, Auto Drive Pressure and Storage, moving funding, moving funds from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five.
How much was that? That's fine. Go ahead. That's fine. It's quite a bit.
Fourteen million, is it?
Well, it was part of what was planned.
From sixteen to fourteen. We have eleven million, seven thirty-eight.
That's water funds anyway, right?
Yep, it'll be, um, SRL funding.
Operating Discussion and Reports, number thirty-four, City Manager Discussion.
Do you want us to move those technical changes?
No, we're going to do them at the end with all the operating technical changes, unless you pull them out.
Okay.
Number thirty-four, under the City Manager Discussion Regarding Recruitment Incentive Improvement Request, page one sixteen in the operating book.
Mayor and Council, I'd recommend that we pull this and delete it. Uh, I'm committed to working with human resources. We'll come up with alternatives. That help with recruitment and retention of.
Move deletion.
Is there? Reason or discussion? I mean, do you have thoughts? Is it just because there's, it's a tight budget year and?
I was lukewarm on this to begin with. Discussion at the budget hearing, council was lukewarm, so, uh, we've already had some preliminary discussions on things, other things we could do to increase our recruiting range and pool of employees. And I think it's appropriate to try those things instead. Uh, possibly changing residency requirement distances and things like that.
And I would just try to track that, Bob. I mean, it's what you can do and see what movement is made, because I mean, I agree. I think we need to be intentional and give, you know, if we need to fund, throw money behind that to look at our recruiting effort, to make sure that we're getting the right people in the right positions. I mean, I'm, I understand this is a tough year and I'm not saying that future years will be easier, but I, I believe in that we need to make sure that we're.
The amount that we asked, we didn't feel would, would even make a dent in.
Yeah, that's what I wondered, too. I get that, too.
I made the motion to delete.
Second.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Passes five zero.
Yeah, I want to go back because this is going to come up. It's in your budget, I understand. We're not putting the fence around Grandview Park this year, are we are?
We are not. At least, at least at this point, no one has requested that the city fund that. Um, if they would, uh, I'm not supportive of that.
Just want to make sure so that. I, I personally don't understand how. Uh, what do we give besides that to Saturday in the park?
Uh, we give a, we, we're an annual sponsorship, I think is eight thousand dollars.
I guess my, my deal is that something that brings that many people to town, I'm not sure it's a bad investment. I understand that not everybody agrees with that, but.
We did the fencing.
I know.
Specifically because of the water tank. That's now, that will now be complete. Um, I don't know what the intent of Saturday in the park is. They could approach us again, but at this point, our direction is that we're not paying to fence around the whole.
Well, I would suggest that if they do, that you bring that for the council to approve.
Bring it back to council.
Out in the middle of that.
Yes.
Well, because I agree. I think that we, that is a huge event for our community and looking at our sponsorship or what is necessary. We want to be an active partner in that. But I also think this year is a situation that we're going to be pulled in a couple of different directions because of rag bri and wanting to, on different aspects of that as well, so. So that makes it kind of a unique year in that, but, but I agree with the mayor that if something is requested, come forward. Thanks.
Number thirty-five, Events Facilities Memo Regarding Kinsit Current Year Expenses and Contract Expiration Date. Report page forty-four, operating page one fifty-two, excuse me, one fifty-three.
So as requested, the mayor would like, um, requested to know what the current FY twenty-three expenses were to date. Um, and we provided that in the memo. They're sitting, um, at about two hundred and thirty-eight thousand so far for the year, which seems like they'll be on projection for what their current budget amount is. And then for the FY twenty-three, um, well, yeah, because their FY twenty-three budget is three hundred and forty thousand, so they'll probably hit that number. And then also provided in the memo, um, the mayor had asked about the contract terms and the agreement, how to end the agreement if council decided they wanted to, and we provided that in the memo.
I don't, I don't, I certainly do not want that to go on automatic pilot. I want to vote. I think we, we need to, I don't like these automatic pilots as witness garbage contract. Uh, I think that should come up for a vote and Kinsit. We'll, we'll be close to the end of their fiscal year and we'll have a better idea of where they're at, but, uh, you know, I'm not going to. I'm not going to apologize for feeling that they've not, they've not performed anywhere near to the level of what we were told they would. And they've had ample opportunity to, to do better, so. So I, I would move that that not go on automatic pilot, that it come back to this council, uh, uh, sometime in May.
Well, currently, the agreement doesn't expire until twenty thirty-two and then it goes on to the automatic renewal.
I thought you said, I thought I read that it would come up, so it already automatically renewed?
No, the term of the agreement was fifteen years, the original term.
Because of the built of, or because of the hotel.
I would, I would assume that was.
Yeah.
Part of it.
Because it was basically they're making that investment, so then they wanted that to come.
But we can term out.
I was going to say, then I didn't know there was that termination.
Early termination, council wanted to move that way, yes.
I, I think if you're looking at that provision, the termination provision, that that should probably be set on the council agenda item for discussion and deliberation.
Yes, if council wanted to move forward with that, yes, we would have to do that.
I don't know. I, I'm going to, I know I'm going to lose, but I don't care. It's ridiculous. The property taxes continuing to go up on this. Deal and. I'm, I'm going to move that it be reduced. It, it, it should be going down and it continue to go up. And every year we say, we hear it's going to get better. Well, it's not getting better. You can't, you can't justify that this is a good deal anymore.
Good morning, City Council.
Morning.
Actually, we are doing better than year over year, if you look at it. Um, that's part in the contract itself.
Name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Um, Newton Cam with the, uh, city, with the convention center. So, um, I understand that, you know, mayor, your concern. Um, however, based on what the calculation is based on the contract itself, so we are performing better. That's the reason why. Sorry. Um, we are performing better. That's the reason why there are a, um, calculation based on what the contract is. And it's something that, you know, we have went through diligently just to make sure that we are continue performing at the level where we should, I promise, um, to the city and, and, um, to the city council as well.
So you're performing better, but your subsidy goes up?
Because of their incent, like the incentive in the, built in the agreement.
Which you.
To get better.
Which you and I talked about.
If you get better, you ought to have less subsidy. Otherwise, you got a very bad contract.
Which it is, council could try, choose to terminate the agreement and.
Renegotiate.
Renegotiate.
There's absolutely nobody in their right mind would sign a contract like that. I don't know.
Well, we did.
We would, yeah. I feel really good about voting no on the contract. Now I feel better than I've ever felt. So this is on you, Moore. You were around here.
Yes, I was.
Well, I don't know. I guess the rest of you are fine. I, I.
Is there a way to bring it back for discussion and analysis? I mean, do we want to do that in May? I think it's important to revisit and just have a conversation of what's been done, what the contract looks like. Now that we understand a track record and have revisited that. Do you have a timeline in mind, mayor? Do you want to do this year or one more year? Because how many years has it been, Jess?
Um, well, it started in two thousand seventeen, so I think they're on years.
Year six.
Year, this is year six. However, we also have accounted for the pandemic as well that really have a high impact on the, not just about us, but the entire nation, so I want, I want to see council take that in consideration as well.
Pandemic was in our favor. We only subsidized you a hundred and sixty thousand. I'd, I'm hoping for another pandemic in year.
Well, mayor, I understand unless we don't perform, then the subsidy, subsidy is going to be less. However, we are performing and based on the current contract is based on a profit sharing component, so. And so I, I just want to point it out. It's not because we are not performing, it's because on the other opposite, we are performing.
Correct.
And that's the reason why.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Exactly. So I want to make that very clear that it's not something that we are not doing.
Correct.
Yep, and, and I think we've had an annual review. It's not like we've gone six years without looking at it.
Correct, correct.
And we've, and we've looked at it, but maybe what we're asking for now is let's, let's take a deeper look and, and get it on an agenda and, and do it the, the right way as far as the review.
I agree, Dan.
So what is, what do they get all in? How much?
Um, according to the current terms, they get a base monthly fee of thirty-five hundred dollars a month for management. They get fifteen hundred a month for accounting fees. And then each month, they get five percent of gross revenue if it is above those monthly fees. If not, they get that base.
And that's what I was afraid of. It's based on gross revenue, not gross profit. So they could give steak dinners away. And that would be to their advantage.
And then they also get a seventy-five percent profit share now that we're in year six.
Is it really gross revenue?
Yeah, well, that's based off the profit.
Who in the world would sign a contract like that?
Well, we worked with staff at, at length and you were a part of that, too. I mean, we all were. Correct.
Well, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I, I mean, contracts are entered into, parties with good faith will deal with each other.
Agree.
With good faith, so I, I don't want to jump to conclusions.
No, I don't either because I wasn't in on that, but performance based on gross revenue is, is not a good measure of anyone's performance. Because they could be booking a million dollars in business and bring in a million dollars, but their expenses could be. Nine hundred ninety-nine thousand and we're paying them based on the gross, not on the net profit. So I.
I'd like a breakdown of what the five percent is and what the seventy-five percent is. That'll tell you if the profit percentage is, is what it should be.
We have to look at the facts, yeah.
We can provide that for you back there. I mean, we have it.
I think either way, we should bring it back for a wider discussion.
Sure. Want to bring that back? That was a good point made, though, Newton. Why the?
Well, June was contract renewal, so May would seem appropriate.
Well, June of twenty, of thirty-two.
No, yeah, so May.
You're not.
Not going to go back that far, right?
No, 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 and you, and it's not something that's going to happen, that's going to change. It's just.
We could bring it back as a presentation in the.
Yeah, they just want, I think people wanted.
As a regular.
How that contract really is numbers wise, so.
And I think Jessica's done a good job of analyzing and digging into and looking through. Her and I have had other conversations as well that I think now things have come to light and understood kind of where people are and what we're able to do.
Had it in front of us every year.
I think it's important to note that the contract is actually paid on a calendar year. So we're trying to budget on it at fiscal year, but the contract is paid on a calendar year.
You can look at now, you've got the December number.
We have the December. We can give you twenty-twos, but it won't be, it won't coincide with the fiscal year, just so you guys know. Okay, I just want to make sure you guys are aware.
Okay, once again, I'm the only union guy in the place, I think, so I move that we take.
Thank you.
Five minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Newton.
Well, Matthew could be in the union. Are you in the union, Matthew?
Of course I'm in the union.
Paying dues?
A long line of.
Only paying dues. You're not in the.
I am paying dues, of course.
Sarah, do we have any more coffee? But.
Empty?
I think so. I think I got tapped.
You're going to, you're going to wolf with the officers now?
Hi, how are you?
I've got a question related to tiny homes. I'm wondering how is the Kritonson Center able to move forward with their project? Does it have to do with the zoning?
What Jill said earlier, it's because if they're being treated as accessory structures, there's a main building there, so they're being treated as accessory structure.
But it makes sense. I was thinking about that more.
More detailed.
And it's almost like if you have a community center or like.
Oh, I love that.
Then you have different, because then you have the tiny homes, but say you want like a recreation hall or you want like an area or something, some type of service, almost like a, thank you, yes, please, almost like a, um.
Right, I, that's way more desirable to me.
Almost like a, a center where you could entertain people, because we can entertain people in your tiny home.
Right.
So it's like if you have a little space, but if that's the way that it works is as long as you have that, a supplemental service, and then those are auxiliary buildings. Thank you.
If it was something like that. I said, somebody has to be on site. Because he's talking about building.
And then you have, and then what you have is like with Kritonson Center, you have, exactly, you have a support staff. That's almost like a, a front desk worker that can at least direct people, that pecking, have questions.
Meltdown or something's happening, they can call.
Well, and whether it's that or just, yeah.
Right.
It depends on what the, yeah, what the purpose is, because another perfect example would be like Hope Street, you know, like they're doing Schessler Hall. But say that they had a different property that had a large presence, but then also smaller auxiliary ones, then they could check in.
I wonder if Chris Damm stayed on with Hope Street or.
I wonder if Chris Damm stayed on with Hope Street or.
Oh, I don't know. But I was talking to Casey about that and I was like, gosh, that's really great, you know, that Hope Street is gonna be able to expand and all that. And she said, yeah, but it's also horrible because the people that were in Schessler Hall now have nowhere to go. They finally had stability in their life where maybe they had lived there for years and done different things and now they're out.
Right. Chris told me that some of the women that were living there, that she literally almost blocked them from wanting to live in the street. But that's where they were living.
Yeah.
But they just didn't have enough revenue to keep going. That kind of was like, I mean, Chris actually whipped it into shape. It was really going downhill when she took over, but.
Okay, next item up is number 36, human resources. Discussion of the salary study improvement request, CIP page 200.
Huh? I'm gonna pull it for a vote, absolutely. I'm gonna pull it. I've been through one of those. It's like paving hearings. You don't want any part of them, but you guys will do what the manager wants. I'm sure I'd move that we drop that payroll study.
Second.
My question for it is, is this comprehensive, Janelle or Bob, that it looks at kind of all positions to remain competitive? Is that kind of the hope?
Yes.
And how much is that?
So you go outside of that for the salary study? So you go and look at other communities?
As an example.
Iowa or do you go to?
I just became aware of the city of Sioux Falls just simply completed one. And they looked at Des Moines, Sioux City, Omaha, other comparable government entities and determined whether they were still competitive within the marketplace.
But never the private sector.
What's that?
But never the private sector.
But not the private sector. In their case, they found out the majority of their jobs were still competitive, but they found a handful of jobs that needed to be looked at further. We're estimating the 100,000.
Yeah.
Wish we could address the mayor's concern about, not his concern, his point about why we shouldn't do it. Because we could have some negative consequences that could come out of it. How do we address that? Is that what you're saying, basically?
Here's what happens. Some employees will be overpaid. It's inevitable. But we never redlined anybody around here because we couldn't do that. And I don't say we should, don't get me wrong, but that's the biggest problem. So you're going to have pay increases and you're not going to, you're never going to decrease anyone's pay around here. So if you're doing a true study of wages, that should happen, but it won't. And I don't think it should necessarily, I mean, it should happen, but on the other side of the coin, how do you ask the person to take a pay cut? That's difficult.
Well, when's the last time one was done?
2003 for non-bargaining and I'm not sure when the last one was done for bargaining units.
I would be curious to see, I mean, if that is the case, Mayor, and I have no idea. I would just be very curious if you're talking like three or five positions or anywhere where you are in that scale. I mean, I think it's a good exercise. Spend 20 years then, at least analyze, okay, well, how many people would you need to bump up, you know? Or are grossly underpaid if that's their argument or contention? And then on the other side, if the mayor's point is correct, you know, how many people are we overpaying and what can we do to address some of that? Whether it's through then, once you have retirements, how do we go through the restructuring or what do we do? And I suppose, I mean, a lot has changed in 20 years. I suppose we need to analyze that. So I think it's a worthwhile exercise, but then we just need to be proactive about addressing the mayor's concerns and retaining good help. I mean, that's kind of probably another part of what we just said that we're not going to fund is, you know, a retention program. But I think this, you're gonna have ongoing costs. If you have to increase people's pay and remain competitive, I get that. But you want to keep good people too. And right now, we mentioned this at the onset of the budget hearing. We looked out at all of our staff members and expect them to do more with less and make sure that we're competitive and that we retain the best.
I don't disagree with you on that, but I have the confidence in our now city manager. I'm not gonna go back to history, but I have confidence in our city manager now that Bob has a good handle on that. It's reviewed annually. It's not like we waited 20 years and we're trying to figure out what's going on today. I think we have a good handle on whether we're treating our staff and employees right or not. I mean, it's, you've got to have some knowledge in that as you're setting these, these pay scales that you're doing. And we, and we go by that and give increases where increases are justified. I guess the mayor has me convinced that, you know, this could, this could cause more problems than it solves. And we must be doing a pretty good job because I think we have a good staff. I, I'm not saying, oh, gosh, maybe we can improve here, improve there. But I think our city manager has a good handle on that already. You know what's going on. And if you think it needs to be corrected, well, we had that just last month, didn't we? Or two months ago? We had to, we had to make some corrective action to get employees, city employees.
Waste water treatment.
To where, yeah, to where they should be.
I do think at this point, this is warranted because at the end of the day, we kind of live in a bubble. I think we treat our employees very well, but as far as our recruitment, I think it'd be nice to know if we're within the range of of other communities as we try to recruit things like planners and police officers and other things.
Let me ask you this. Where else would we use this $100,000 if we didn't do the study where it's needed? We're talking about increasing police officers.
Yeah, we could use it.
We're talking about having weekly pickups for recycle. We're talking, we're talking about all kinds of things.
Yeah, it could be used elsewhere.
I mean, for me, the timing, I appreciate what you're recommending, Bob, but the timing for me just seems, it just doesn't seem to be right to be spending 100,000. Unless you think we're running a risk of losing a full department or losing employees. But that's across the state, across the country of finding good, good workers. Just to be transparent with you and just candid about it, maybe another, maybe other day.
I was gonna say, I'd be curious to Janelle's thoughts. And Dan, I completely agree. I think, and I've, I've harped on this, that it's a tough budget year and we're gonna have to make decisions. And look, I don't want to spend 100K just to see where we are with pay scales and everything like that necessarily either. But I think that my understanding of watching us operate so far is that our staffs, our staff are trying to be firefighters, so to speak. And, you know, we just had the director of the library come to us and say, wow, we gotta put out this fire because we are not filling these positions and they're not what we need. So now they're trying to address it. Tom was trying to address the inequities and he's like, we gotta put this fire out and figure out how to keep people, we'll do this. Whereas this is more comprehensive, saying, let's let everyone have an equal playing field so they don't have to scream, try to do this. And I don't want to spend 100K on this either. I'd rather hire a police officer, no offense, Janelle or Bob. I would probably rather do that as well, but in 20 years, when is the timing gonna be right?
Oh, it will be. It will be. I just think this, this year is just too tough to be doing this. So I would, I want to make it clear, not at this time. I'm not saying not ever.
But you would want to do it later on.
Janelle Bertrand, Human Resources Director. I think the city manager, and I brought this because we had noticed several department heads coming to us indicating that they wish to increase several of their job classes, the pay in them because they are not, they didn't feel they were competitive. So I believe the city manager and I thought that if we just took a look at the whole organization, then that would take care of some of these individual requests that come piecemeal. I think we need to look externally at other communities. I think we need to look also at our internal, the jobs that we hold internally to ensure consistency across departments and pay grades. And like Bob had said, this has been a long time since we've done this. I agree with your comments about looking at how do we handle the results because not everybody's gonna go up, not everybody's going to come down. So I believe before that even gets, I guess, rolled out, we need to figure out what exactly are we going to do based on the results that come in.
That's what I would like to stress is what's our action plan on the what ifs? So what will we do if, and I'm not saying we have it, but if we, it comes back and we're like, well, these six people are quite a bit more than were, you know, recommended they be.
Director of Human Resources, grossly overpaid.
Right. So then, I'm not a big fan of redlining people either, but that would need to be done.
We see a lot of our technical jobs that we don't compete competitively, especially in the private sector. A lot of the inspectors, what Daryl sees, some of the engineering positions, we are struggling with matching pay. So I think it's, now's a good time to look at those things.
Right, but that brings me back to the people who are maybe above that. What, what are contingency plan for that?
I don't think we've gotten that far. We thought we'd.
That's the most important part of.
Mm-hmm. It's really difficult.
And when you say you're overpaid, you lose that employee's incentive.
The huge, right.
Very difficult.
It's a concern that we'll have to evaluate should this be approved.
Well, that is, as well as not knowing the consequence of getting employees that are not paid fairly, getting those employees in line. We don't know how much we're talking about. We could very well put ourselves in a corner where if you've done a study and when your department heads are talking to you about this, can we not look at and say, well, is it competitive in the marketplace? What are the other, what are other cities paying? What are other private companies paying? And kind of just take it upon ourselves to say, are we way off or are we in line?
We do that currently when they come to us.
Well, that's, that's what I thought. So I mean, I mean.
But we do it so piecemeal that it's just, it's like whack a mole.
Well, but it takes a lot.
We're just trying to look at it from an organizational way.
Right.
It's been 30 years, just to know where we're at in the marketplace. Right now, we don't know where we're even at in the marketplace.
But what Julie's saying, and I agree, we have to have a plan. And what I feel as a, as a council member is that you're gonna have the, you're gonna, first of all, you're gonna spend $100,000 when I don't think this is the year to be doing that. But secondly, you're gonna come up with a plan and you're gonna give it to us. It'll come back to us and the mayor to decide, are we gonna give the pay raises that are needed? And how much is that gonna be? And we don't know. It's kind of like, if we're gonna act on, if we're gonna pay $100,000 to somebody to tell us we're wrong and they're right, and we now need to take corrective action, we don't even know how much that is and how much that's gonna impact the budget, which is already strained. I mean, it just puts us in a, and I'm not saying I'm trying to avoid it. I'm just saying this is not the year to be doing that. We're arguing over whether we do recycling every week or every other week, you know, for a, for a small, a great smaller amount per year than, than what it's gonna cost the taxpayers to actually act on a plan that's given to us. It's not gonna sit on the shelf.
Councilmember Moore, we understand that. And if the timing isn't right, we understand that we'll continue to do how we do. We just, as Janelle said, we were starting to see more and more come forward. So we thought now is the time to at least put it out there for council consideration.
If we do.
But if the timing's not right, it's not right.
And if we do the study, it doesn't mean that we have to take action on any item that's discovered.
That's correct.
Well, if I, if I'm an employee, if I'm an employee here and I know you're, and you're doing a study because I've complained I'm underpaid, I expect the city council to take action to get me in line with where that plan is.
But because I think I'm underpaid doesn't mean I am.
No, but when they come back and say your pay go up 12%, we say, well, you know, we're gonna have to work into this. We can only do 6%. I'm telling you. It, these are as bad for personnel morale as they are good. Because it's difficult to say to somebody, you're gonna be redlined for five years until the world, you catch up with the world or the world catches up with you. That's, I don't know. I don't care. You guys can.
Do you remember what the results were 20 years ago after you did the study? Did we make a lot of, were there a lot of expenses associated with?
It was only, it was only applied to non-represented. Various positions were redlined. I can't recall the number of employees that maybe moved up in classification. Just about from top to bottom, all, all, all pay ranges were adjusted. And people were moved in and out of pay ranges. But there were people that were redlined.
How long?
Up to three or four years. It depends on where they fell in the, whatever the new range was, as it was defined.
But they would continue to get a cost of living raise?
Nope, not, not until their pay hit, not until the top of the range exceeded what their current salary was.
Do you recall, Bob, what the average percent of increase was at the?
No. No.
Janelle, I'm.
I know in a, I know in a lot of cases, the compensation was, they fell within the range, the band of the compensation, so there was no change. It more impacted the people at the bottom end that didn't fall within the band and the top end that were above the top of the range. If you fell within the range, you, you, yeah. It wasn't looked at on an individual by individual basis.
But they also include, they also historically increased the top end of the range.
In this case, they didn't.
Well, that's unique then because that's not, you, did you do one of these for the state?
Did.
Statewide?
Statewide.
How'd that work?
Very similar to what this place experienced.
Don't get me wrong, I'm, I want to pay fairly, but, and it seems like we've made adjustments. You call it putting fires out, but we've made adjustments as needed on a, as it comes along. But if you're getting a volume of complaints, is what I'm hearing, we're having a volume of complaints from the employees, you know, we're having a volume of complaints from the employees, you know, those, can't those be addressed on a department by department basis without having to say, we gotta go have a study done, a hundred thousand dollars spent, comes back? I, I see no other way than, other than to put the plan into, to implement the plan.
Some of the requests are not just individual based, they're department-wide, where we've had a director come and want to raise multiple job classes in their department, so it, we, I mean.
Now, let me ask you, let me ask you, is it, is it a two-part test, kind of, where if we, if we increase the number of employees in a department, that would, that would help the situation? In other words, do, do people feel like they're doing a job for two?
Well, I think that's, I don't think that's a fair, compensation should be based on the level of responsibility of work, the work, the work type, not the workload.
Not the work volume?
Correct.
Janelle, the only last part that I would mention in this is just for clarification, 'cause I'm so far from an HR expert, but, um, my question would be, as far as the, um, redlining of employees, gosh, I'm, I'm hardly even familiar with what that means, but I, I think I can grasp it now. Um, but aren't we essentially saying, if you were to redline, say, you're not incre, you're, we're not increasing cost of living, we're not increasing your pay, whatever, until X happens, until you reach this, or, you know, that happens? Aren't we essentially saying to them, that, look, if you're unhappy because you're being redlined and we're not able to increase your pay for however many years, until you fall more in line, if they were to come to you and say, well, then I'm upset and I'm going to leave, we would say, well, then, okay, if you can find a different position that's going to pay you more, but we're finding that based off of our immediate area, you're already paid higher than what you are, so if you think you can find a higher paying position, then by all means, you should pursue that opportunity, because we're already at the, at the peak of that.
That's the gist of the conversation, but.
You know what I mean?
Right, no, we would, yes.
It would have to be above that.
Because we had a study done, and the analysis showed.
That's easy to say for, to a person that's got fifteen years in the system.
Right.
It's easy to say that, but when you've got fifteen years in the system, the pay isn't just one integral part of what you look at, because we're, I'm so close to hypers now, I have to put up with this, whether I like it or not. And so my solution will be, I'll become very unproductive to the, to the level that I think I'm getting paid for, that's the problem.
Oh, I think it's terribly difficult.
It is a difficult situation, 'cause then, on the other hand, you have other employees that aren't being paid the value of what their work is, and they're equally as frustrated when they look across the hallway and see someone that's overcompensated, you know, there's no easy answer.
But Mayor, to that point, 'cause I totally see, I see where you're going now with that too, I would look to the director, assuming that it's not the director that's in that position, I would look to the director and say, if you're not holding that person accountable to be productive, then you have to let them go.
Then let's vote for it, I'm, you've convinced me, let's do it, let's get her done. It's gonna be the big train wreck, but I've been in train wrecks before around here, so why would this be?
Well, no, I'd, well. Mayor, council, just to add, before this would ever start, would have to come back to council, and at that point, we would have the work plan, whoever we chose as the consultant would have the work plan and the steps that would be required, so you'd have a better idea of exactly what this is gonna accomplish. As I mentioned, the case of Sioux Falls, their, their summary report was, all but about seven or eight positions fell within reasonable compensation, so you might wanna look at these positions, and that was, that was as far as it went.
They shared that with you?
It was in the paper, I read it in the paper.
What's interesting about that, then, then there's a, there's another issue that needs to be dealt with, obviously. If we have an expert come in after a hundred thousand dollars and they say, most everybody's in line except for these three, these three or seven employees, it doesn't answer the question we have at hand, in my opinion. Who's gonna say, well, that's an expert from down the road, why, why can they tell us that what we're getting paid is fair and reasonable? I know what I do here, I know how this system works, I've been, I've been in City Hall for twenty years.
And heads do this, individually, put together?
I mean, that's gonna work against you too, if I, if I were in that position, Bob, that's the argument I make with you, I'd say, well, they don't know what they're talking about. I know what I'm doing here, I can talk to my director and I can convince him or her that I, I deserve more pay. That's just, I don't know. I'm with Alex, so I'm not an HR person at all.
Yeah.
You're just trying to anticipate difficulties of what this would.
Well, and the city manager makes a good point, that whatever, whoever does it, the consultant, they're gonna put a, work plan together for us, but.
And is the argument, I mean, I know I was talking about, that I think we ask people to be firefighters in the sense that just as a problem arises, then they address it. Julie was kind of just mentioning, just, you know, is this something we can ask our directors to analyze internally and say?
Just their own department?
No, look at your department across the.
We certainly can do that, but this is an outside, third-party neutral.
Correct, and it takes emotion out of it.
I could come and tell you that everyone in city manager's office is grossly underpaid and skew the data to show that.
They're trained in this area, that's not to say that my staff isn't trained, but I mean, they have the resources available to look at multiple employers, this would be a huge undertaking for my department to look at some of the jobs. I mean, you saw Monday's agenda, how many job descriptions and pay changes came here, um, it, it's very, very time-consuming amongst all the other work that my staff has to.
And that's what I kind of worry, yeah.
Call for the questions.
Call for the vote. Been so long.
No, the mayor made the, I seconded your motion to.
We're voting, pull it or not pull it, or is it the delete?
Yes would be to delete it, no would be to keep it in the budget.
Shaner?
No.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Couldn't convince me as much.
No.
Moore?
Aye.
Kane?
No.
Okay. Moving on.
Passes three-two. The next item is number, number thirty-seven, discussion of the safety management software system improvement request.
Of which one? Sorry, where, which one?
Um, number thirty-seven, discussion of the safety soft, uh, management software request.
Gotcha, thank you.
Ross Weatherford, safety manager. So, over the last three fiscal years, um, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, the average direct cost of injuries within the, for city employees was one point four million dollars. If you include the indirect costs, which are one to two times the cost of the direct costs, um, we spent anywhere between two point nine million and four, four point three million on injuries. In calendar year twenty-two, we had a whole, a total of a hundred and eighty-two injuries. So, uh, nineteen percent of the employees of the city got injured in, in, uh, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, sixty-two of those I had to report to OSHA, um, so thirty-four percent of our injuries were reported to OSHA. Um, and our cost for injuries, our direct cost for injuries in, uh, two thousand twenty-two was almost one point five million. So, the more injuries we have, our insurance premiums go up.
Those are for comp claims?
Yes. Um, so, a safety software system, uh, studies show that they can reduce injuries by fifteen to thirty-five percent. Uh, if I can reduce the injuries by that, by that much, I estimate that I could save the city, um, almost a half a mil, between half a million and a million dollars.
Not quite that simple, because that doesn't necessarily mean your work comp premium, that's how you tell what you're gonna save, what's our work comp premium today with the Iowa League?
So, our total, so, um, what we spent in, our work comp claims in.
Our claims, you're not paying them, the IMCA's paying.
The premium?
Yeah.
For FY twenty-three is five hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Right. Now, granted, that's probably gonna go up if you're having a million foreign claims, but you're not gonna reduce that premium, it's gonna go up. I'm not opposed to your software, but you guys stand there and make statements that just aren't true, that, what you're paying, what the work comp company pays in claims has no relationship to our cost, that's my point. You're paying five hundred thousand, you're not gonna reduce that, 'cause you got, your mod's going up again.
Right.
So, you may stop that mod from going up, which would be admirable and probably worth the eighty thousand, but keep that in mind, you're not gonna see a half a million dollar decrease in this budget because of that.
And that mod takes years to go back down.
Goes up fast, comes down, just like, just like your credit.
Takes you to go down.
Goes up slow and comes down really, really, really bad, slow.
So, we, even if we did have very good size reduction in the work comp claims, it's gonna have to be for several consecutive years before that premium drops. So, again, I'm not against the software here, but I'm just saying, you're just helping.
But the, the indirect cost is all in the city, and the indirect costs are more indirect.
We, we understand all that, but I don't want this council to think they're gonna see a half a million dollar incre, decrease in the budget, that's, that's what I'm trying to point out.
Right.
You, you've got two sets of circumstances that aren't related, that, anyway.
We're just, he's one person to nine hundred, so we're trying.
No, I get it.
Okay.
We, we understand that, I understand, I just, when somebody says we're gonna see a half a million dollar decrease, that's not, I mean, I'm sure she would love to cut his budget, but that's not, I, I just want the council to be aware of what that actually means, that's all.
So, we'll see fewer lost days at work and things like that.
There will be a cost reduction, um, though, that, that would, you're, we may not see that, it may be less than that, but we will see a cost reduction, um, and just based on the numbers, that's what I calculated. So, I don't know exactly what the cost savings will be, but with the software, I can reduce injuries and I can reduce the cost, I reduce the number of lost days, um, and reduce the number of days that people are on restricted duty.
Talk to us about the software just a little bit?
The software, um, it would be an all, all-in-one system, or what I would be looking for is all, all-in-one system to automate, simplify, and improve safety through metrics and automated analytics. We can't, I can't improve anything that I can't measure, and right now, everything that I measure in safety is on paper and through manual processes. The systems that I'm looking at, or the, a system, uh, would, any data you input in the system would give me automatic analytics. So, it would, um, include safety incident management, so for injuries, um, inspection management process, so I could go out to the facilities, I could do an OSHA-type inspection on my phone, and when I'm done, I hit submit, and it goes to the director, it goes to supervisors, and then that would automatically create a corrective action report that would need to be updated by the supervisors and the directors automatically, uh, every thirty days until it's completed.
That's what I was wanting to know, is what, what is this software going?
And then, by, uh, eliminating those hazards or correcting those violations, we can reduce injuries that way. There would be a training management system that's included, that allows for automatic, uh, renewal of annual training, it does automatic analytics, and, and it will send, like I said it, to send reports to the directors every month.
The training piece is important, because it also includes HR topics, which you will soon be getting an email from my staff for the sexual harassment training that you have to take online. Um, it is the only online platform that we have right now, um, this is far greater than the one we currently use, um, so that is definitely something that we are interested in, is the training module piece of the software.
I was wondering if there was gonna be some training involved?
Yes.
That's great.
And it will schedule and send automatic reminders, right now, um, we've just looked at our current system, and we have to detach and attach every single employee to the training system, which is an incredibly manual process when you've got nine hundred.
We have it, we subscribe to a service and we have to do a monthly savings, monthly safety meeting in order to keep, as part of our work comp, it's a good program, I don't have any problem with it.
Yeah.
The, the current training system I have, I can't edit any of the training, it's all, uh, pre-made stuff, that, it is what it is. With the systems that I've looked at, we can edit the training and make it Sioux City-specific, I can make multiples of the same training and make it one for wastewater and one for underground utilities. So, that would, that would greatly improve the training that the employees are getting. Um, safety, safety data sheets, uh, the management of those, right now, it's all on paper, what we could do with the system is they could go into electronic library, um, we could scan a QR code, and the SDS will automatically pop up.
So, the supervisors would have access as well?
And then, anytime a manufacturer updates, so right now, um, you're, you have to go in annually and review all of those safety data sheets, and some, some departments have hundreds, um, they're, they need to be reviewed annually to make sure they're current. If, with the system, if a safety data sheet is updated by the manufacturer, it will automatically update in the library. It would also include document management, so, um, there are, depending on the, the programs that they need, like confined spaces or fall protection or respiratory protection, all of those require written, uh, programs specific to the work center, all of that would be stored in the system. Um, so it could be, you could look at it at any time. So, if OSHA shows up, I've got it all right there on my phone, uh, for them. Uh, one of the most important parts of this is probably hazard reporting, right now, hazards are not getting reported to me like I would like them to be, um, we do have a, a paper process, and then that goes sent through inter-office mail, and I don't get it for a couple of days, by then, we could have injuries, and that, that did happen, uh, last year. So, with this system, you scan a QR code, it brings up what the hazard, the information that I need, you fill it out, you hit submit, I get a notification on my phone, and then I could see it and I could go there.
We have a document if you'd like to see a lot of the features that this provides.
No, I think we're all for it, you don't have to, you don't have to sell the name.
Well, you wanted to come back.
Oh, no, 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 thank you so much for touching on those for us, thank you very much.
I do have two quick questions, does it track employee certifications?
It will.
It will, okay, and then, um, this, this wouldn't replace any in-person training, do we still have in-person training, or would it identify?
There'll still be a lot of in-person.
Until we get the robots in to do that, right?
What's that?
Until we get robots to do it.
This will help actually direct in-person training based on needs.
Yeah, this, it sounds really good.
With the certifications, you put in the certification, if it expires after three years or four years or five years, you, there'll be an email reminder automatically that goes in there.
Good, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Next item, number thirty-eight, human rights, memo regarding the joint efforts of human rights department and that community liaison, inclusive liaison, page forty-five and forty-six.
Mayor and council, uh, at your request, uh, I scheduled a meeting and had two council members, council member O'Kane and council member Shaner, uh, met with our inclusive Sioux City liaison as well as human rights director, uh, we talked through some issues and have agreed going forward, we will meet, uh, at least on a monthly basis to, to talk about coordination to ensure that we are not duplicating and, uh, going in directions we shouldn't be going, we should be working together and we are committed to doing that.
Thank you, Bob, for doing that.
You're welcome.
Number thirty-nine, Parks, memo regarding total trail miles and future planning expansions, page forty-nine in your wrap-up packet.
Thirty-five miles. Remember, fourteen miles ten years ago? Twenty years ago, we were.
We were fourteen too, twenty years ago.
That's the problem, we didn't build any for.
When I started in two thousand fourteen, so I'm going on nine years now, I think the number was twenty-eight.
You were going on nine years with the city?
Yeah.
You remember that first email I sent you?
Yeah.
I never even met you yet.
Twenty-eight back in the nineties then, 'cause you didn't build very many.
Yeah, and, and actually, the connections that are outlined in here, the ones that we did recently, they were smaller ones, but it made huge impacts.
It did.
Yeah, and like, last year, the Riverfront Trail and a mile and a half, that was the most crucial length in, not only Sioux City, all of Siouxland.
Nine years and the honeymoon continues on.
Yeah.
Well, just.
I'm not sure about that, Mayor.
Keep pushing forward.
You came at about the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah, he came just a little before you, didn't he?
No, it was after, we didn't, we didn't have a Parks director.
Yeah.
We didn't? Who's managing all that?
Uh, Asia Wallace was the. Angel Wallace was the Division Manager. It was not a department yet.
Gotcha. Its own department.
Because it was under public work.
Yep.
And they never got any funding because Gordon and Carney stole it all for those darn streets rather than any kind of trail, right?
It was before their.
Neither of them were here either.
But as you can see, over the next four years with this Destination Iowa program, we'll be adding another six point four miles, not including ten and a half miles of mountain bike trail. So, lots of good stuff coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number fourteen, Police. Discussion Regarding Staffing Levels As Well As Funding Options. Page two ninety-two in the operating book.
This is where the four officers come in?
Yep.
How much is that?
Five dollars and fifty-eight cents or eighty.
Five, what was it?
Five hundred and three thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars for four officers. The levy impact is five dollars and eighty-five cents on a typical hundred thousand dollar resident. Annually.
That's if we have to tax for every one of them.
Yes. That's if we use tax for all of the funding.
Well, you have to.
Why?
Where are you gonna get money if you don't use tax? Cops are all taxed.
Well, no, the option was, the option was discussed at the last budget meeting was the ability to use like a Red Flex or any.
You can, but you should not use that for perma, I mean, I don't, but.
Well, I'm not saying that we're gonna use it permanently because I know there is a possibility of a future risk of that account, but if we don't have to tax all of it this year, why not use those funds there for safety? I think the public would appreciate the fact that we're using the funds for funding of the police. And then, next year, our, that fund should even be a little larger next year because we don't have a full year of funds in that account, Teresa?
Three hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Right, but we haven't been collecting that money for the year.
From July twenty-twenty-two to January.
Yep, for six months, we have three hundred.
Six months. So, I think unless that fund disappears, then we can tax for it at a later date if we're forced to.
Move them.
But to your point though, this might encourage them to find some busier streets where they can collect a little bit more.
If that wouldn't encourage them, they would have already done it. They have the wrong cameras. They're difficult to move.
That's true. It'd take a lot of work.
Well, the chief doesn't wanna hear, but that's, the setup they have is terrible.
Where are the cameras that we used to have on the interstate?
They don't have them anymore.
Oh, they trade them in or?
Well, we never owned them. We don't.
Oh, those, right, right, but, oh, so.
Red Flex moving.
Red Flex, okay. Hi, Chief.
Hello, Rex Mule Police Department. Just to answer your question, Julie, they no longer utilize those, the trailer-mounted ones. In fact, those were in bad need of repair when taken off the interstate, so.
They seemed very mobile, is why I was asking.
Yes, to some degree. Yeah, you bet.
I mean, the footprint was big, but.
Yeah, the footprint was big and would be very difficult in some urban settings, which is why the kiosks are deployed. But as the mayor mentioned, they're not as portable as advertised because of the weight of the batteries primarily that runs the devices.
And it's not on a cart or anything, is it?
No.
Perhaps we should get some built?
Well, the sad part is that I don't, I don't understand why they didn't put some sort of solar deal on that. Especially when you put them by a pole, you'd have a.
Mount the solar.
Mount to a solar, but I don't know. I'm not very, I've never been a big fan of Red Flex themselves, but that's probably, there probably are another vendor, so.
No, there, there are some other vendors. I've seen, I've seen some discussion on the Iowa Chief's website, which we weren't aware of, but I think Red Flex was bought out by another company. And so there, we refer to them as Red Flex because that's what we're familiar with, but it's actually a larger company that took them over.
But, I mean, the, the problem is, for me, it's not about the money, it's changed behavior. Well, when you see the revenue go in half, guess what? We've changed behavior.
Yes.
So we need to move them to change behavior somewhere else.
Correct.
I don't care what the DOT says. I'm tired of driving and having people pass me eighty miles an hour on the dang interstate again. It's, and you put some out there again. It's ridiculous. The speed that's on that, you know, if the DOT was.
Coming through town.
Is really monitoring that. They're gonna, they're gonna tell you that the traffic speed has increased on the interstate dramatically. We made a thorough pair through town. That was what we wanted, but when you get that, you get speed and potential for bodily injury and.
No, I agree.
It's not really safe for the officers to be out there ticketing.
Well, it's, it's very difficult because of the Jersey barriers.
Right.
And it's not, you can't run traffic going the other way. There's no place to turn around and parking there with those speeds. And there's no doubt that since the cameras were removed, that we've seen the interstate speed increase. It was kinda staggering when we did the speed study prior to the placement of the interstate cameras, what the speeds were. I mean, the amount of traffic that was over thirty miles per hour, over the limit was, you know, I'd have to look up the data, but it was kinda staggering.
Yeah.
Well, agreed, we need to change that behavior.
But the decisions that people, and that's our end goal. I mean, this is, obviously, this is something that if we can modify behavior, we don't wanna make revenue from any of this. We have mission accomplished. If we can, if we can, you know, train the motoring public to, hey, keep it at a reasonable level, everybody will be safer.
So, what do we have before us? Do we have the four officers in the, and make whatever motion?
There's zero. There's zero in the budget right now.
You'd have to make a motion to add any officers.
Right.
And you think you'd have success filling those positions?
Yes, and for, we're about to begin a hiring, you know, a new hiring process. We're trying to tweak our advertising message because we're trying to cater to, I know there was a discussion with Janelle earlier about bringing people into this organization. I think we have an incredibly supportive community. We have a supportive council. I think that we're in a very good place to recruit good personnel. We're making changes and discussing with the Civil Service Commission how we can make adjustments to that hiring to allow for more frequent submission of applications so we're not missing people that graduate, things like that, maybe increase the frequency of our testing. We wanna bring the best possible candidates here and I think the environment in Sioux City is about as good as anywhere. We enjoy the public support, the community policing that we do makes this a great place to work and we've got great people. So, we will be working on that and I know one of the things I discussed with all of you was losses. Well, just to give my staff an idea of losses, we, you know, I went through the org chart and we highlighted where our losses have been recently due to retirement, military leave, people on sick and injured, and the numbers are very challenging. So these four officers are incredibly important to us in that when we experience those unexpected losses, we can still maintain services. That's my primary goal. Would we like to gradually increase to meet the demand? Absolutely. And you, you have spoken about this at the last meeting. But it's contending for the unexpected that we wanna do to maintain essential services. We don't wanna stop doing the things that we're doing because we're a service-oriented organization. You know, those customer service things that we do, when you call and there's a small, you know, just a small theft or something and we say we're gonna come and do that, we don't wanna stop doing those things. It's important to keeping the crime rate low and numbers and resources and having officers there when we have losses that we don't expect is critically important to public safety.
Has there been an issue with retirements? So don't you have a far enough notice, advance notice that you can fill?
Well, when, when they participate in the drop program, then we have a locked-in date and the city manager mentioned it at the last meeting. Those are things that we can hire in advance for and we do what we call the pipeline hiring, where I know Officer Moore is gonna retire at this date. We get somebody in the system, we hire them, we get them through the academy, through training. And the hope is that when they're done with training and a solo officer, that's the time that that other person is departing so there's no loss of services. It's the unexpected losses, the folks that retire early or, you know, or resign or move on. Those are the ones that create challenges for us because we can't expect those. And as this council mentioned, it's about a year roughly between hiring, training that they're able to operate independently. So, that's a lot of catch-up time.
Okay, so, Teresa, if we consider, and I don't know if it would pass, but if we consider having, adding four additional police officers, when we make a motion at the end of the meeting for you to balance the operating budget.
It would include that if you, if you vote for it.
You what?
It would include that if you.
It would include that, but then, depending on what the final budget numbers are, we could still make revisions to that? Don't we come, don't you bring it back to us for a final?
Yeah, at the final approval, you could make changes to it at that time if you wanted to.
Because right now, I've lost track of the overall, maybe you all have kept track of it, but I, I haven't, the overall impact it has on the budget and what it has on the, on the levy.
Your actions today will be, will result in the final proposed budget that would be subject to approval at.
The March thirteenth meeting.
Yeah, but you could make, you could amend it at that time as well.
Okay. Well, so then, I'll make a motion that we include in our operating budget the hiring of four additional police officers. Am I using the right terminology? Four additional police officers or?
Police officers, yeah. A conditional comes in with the eligibility list and things like that. Those are offers.
Okay.
And I, I think the question, Dan, for me then, becomes two is, do you want to just use that as, as taxpayer funding or?
Yeah, Alex, just, just as a point of order, since you made a motion, I think it needs to be seconded.
Second.
Okay, there you go.
Was just, do you want to use any Red Flex or give direction of that or no?
I would, once again, I'd recommend that we not tie it to Red Flex. Red Flex is very one-time possible in nature. At any point, the state could move to eliminate speed cameras or red light cameras. In addition, we use it for other one-time expenses and have, and we use it all, whether it be for 411, which are medical payments for public safety or other public safety improvements. So, we try to keep them to one-time expenses and not ongoing expenses, just because of the, the danger of it.
Isn't your point, Alex, too, is that if the money's there, if the money's there, why not apply it to that for the, at least for the coming year?
Well, we could, but then you're just gonna take it away from something else that we'd have to raise taxes for.
That's true, too.
That's, that's the only reason.
We're still unpopular.
Well, no, you don't have to take it away from something else because it's not budgeted for something right now.
Well, the problem is you got, it'll be for the state house right now that's gonna increase the police and fire long-term medical costs and that, that we don't know what that number is. And that's what they've historically been able to handle, those additional costs.
Oh.
We never know what the legislature's gonna do to us because they've always been so fair and reasonable in their approach to local government.
But, yeah, but Alex.
A hint of sarcasm there, Mr. Mayor.
I'll let that go today.
But I'd rather increase taxes on something that the state is forcing us to do than something that we're adding.
But the problem is you don't get to raise, if they pass a law, you're gonna certify this budget. Those laws pass at the forty-eighth hour, twenty-fourth hour of the last day and you get stuck with that bill, but you don't, you've already certified your budget. So, and it, it sounds like a slush fund and that's a terrible word, but if she doesn't have that flexibility, it's a prob.
And, right.
That, that's the problem, that we get stuck with the costs after the fact.
Teresa, in the case of 411 payments, we don't necessarily budget. We just use this money to pay the 411.
Correct.
And then fix it during a budget amendment.
Yep, absolutely.
And that's what I'm saying, if they stick with another deal.
In this case, what would happen in the next year is that we would have less fund balance, beginning fund balance to balance the budget. So that's what would happen. Right now, we start the year with a large fund balance and general fund that allows us to keep that tax levy down. We would have less of that, which would, again, just push, it would kick the can to the next year to do an increase if necessary.
And this was my question, we get to forty-five, and Alex's question, was that answered about, are, are the Red Flex revenues for the current year, the three hundred twenty-three thousand, are those spoken for? Are, have those?
No. No, those are not spoken for. They're sitting in a fund.
Well, they're spoken for, if you are using them for what you just said, if you need.
Yeah, at the end of the year, if the funds are there, we'll use them for the 411.
Safety though, right?
Well, oh, yeah, they use them for ongoing.
Yep.
Like, for example, what?
For example.
For example, the remodeling of the police department, a lot of that was.
Yeah, and some of the things that come up throughout the year were like, when they did the addition at the fire station, they had some septic issues and there was, you know, fifty thousand dollars. We would use that to supplement those. We always use it for public safety.
And, so what I was comfortable with, Dan, just so everyone else knows, is what I was thinking was not exhausting those funds or using all of them for this. I was going to propose that if we have that fund balance and we know where it currently is, if we applied to these officers, if we covered two of them this fiscal year with that fund, that still leaves you almost a hundred thousand in flex and that's just over the course of six months. So you'll still have six months of growth on top of that hundred thousand and you covered those two additional officers at least this year.
Taxed just for the other.
And then taxed for the other two. So then it makes the tax burden only the, what, two fifty or two seventy-five or something per hundred thousand? That was gonna be my proposal, Dan.
I would, I'm not gonna vote for four officers. I'm not opposed. But I think you've gotta work this in and see. I, I vote for two and I don't care, I'd leave the, I would leave the tax portion or the funding portion to the.
Tax.
I just, I can't go for four for asking other departments to do a whole lot less. And I understand, but I think, you know, you want some sort of progression to show the council's good faith. And I think two officers personally does that, but I don't wanna vote no, but I'm, I'm going to, but I want you to know why. It's not that I'm opposed to additional officers.
Mayor, I don't wanna speak against my own case, but you could make a motion to amend to do the two officers and see if you get a second and see if that passes then.
I'll move that and I, I would, as part of that motion, I would, would leave it to Teresa to determine the best course of action. I, I, and, you know, if you can use some Red Flex, I'm fine with that. But I, I don't think we have a hard time selling to the general public. We added two police officers and we're sorry, but it costs you two dollars and fifty cents, less than a cup of coffee at Scooters, to be able to do that. I think, I mean, I'd be willing to.